Praise the Lord, everyone. Welcome to our June 10th, 2025 City Council Meeting. We will now have an invocation by Mr. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Lord, I come to you tonight with a heavy heart for our city, Lord. Lord, I ask that you clear the deception, Lord, that has come over us, Lord. It's come over our citizens, Lord, that you show the truth to them, Lord, that you show the truth to all of us, Lord. Lord, I ask that you protect this room tonight from evil spirits, Lord, in Jesus' name, that you keep them out of here. Lord, I ask that you keep the demons and the evil spirits of Satan out of this room tonight, Lord. Because in the name of Almighty God, in the name of Jesus Christ, they have no power, no power. Lord, I ask that you reveal all, that you show all. And Lord, I ask that you give us the wisdom to seek you, that you give us the wisdom to seek what's righteous, Lord, that you give us the wisdom that only you can offer. Lord, I ask that we don't speak for ourselves, Lord, that we speak what you want us to say. And Lord, I ask that you forgive all of us, Lord, for the wrongs that we've done, that we're repenting. We had an opportunity to apologize to a man who was sinned against in this room in the work session, and I thank you for that opportunity. And I ask that we just continue to go that direction, Lord, where we are repenting for what we have done wrong. Lord, protect this city, protect the families in this city, Lord. And Lord, I just thank you so much for the sacrifice that you made, sending your son, Jesus Christ, to die on the cross for our sins. In your name I pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is consent agenda, includes routine items that can be approved with one vote.
May I have a motion, please, on the consider agenda?
Second.
Let us vote.
This way, not all members have had a chance to log into their devices, so I'll call for the voice vote. Councilmember Frawley? Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Not working.
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
Yes.
The motion passes, seven zero. The next section is public hearings. These are required by law or directed by council procedure. Staff will give a presentation. The public can give comments. Individuals have three minutes to speak. If speaking for a group, you have five minutes. Group speakers must say which group they represent. Each group gets one spokesperson. Each speaker must say their name, their locality of residence. After public comments, the public hearing will close, and the matter will rest with council. Agenda item number two: consideration of adopting ordinance amending Section 36-223 of the Lynchburg City Code to increase the transient lodging tax to 8.5% of the total amount paid for lodging and $3 per room per night excluding any other taxes levied thereon by or for any transient to any local. Mr. Greg Patrick, Deputy Cemantra, will provide a summary of the request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The item before you today, this public hearing, is to consider increasing the lodging tax, which is the percent you pay on the cost of a room night, from 6.5% up to 8.5% and to consider increasing the bed tax, which is the amount you pay per room night, from $1 up to a maximum of $3. Thank you very much.
Is anyone would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone would like to speak in opposition? If y'all line up in the hour, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak again. My name is Adam Hall. I'm a resident of Ward Four. I'm a Lynchburg native, a small business owner, parent of two young boys. And my family depends on our short-term rental management company, which oversees more than 30 properties here in Lynchburg to make a living. And we're proud to call Lynchburg home. Less than two weeks ago, many of us sat right here in this chamber for over three hours, listening to one Lynchburg resident after the other voice deep concerns about a proposed transient occupancy tax hike. We spoke respectfully, we gave personal testimony, and we outlined the real-world consequences of a policy that would hurt local business, deter tourism, and penalize a single industry. We stayed until 1:00 a.m. waiting, hoping to be heard. And ultimately, after sitting through what was, quite frankly, a grueling meeting, this council voted to postpone that proposal indefinitely. And that word indefinitely gave us hope that our voices mattered. But now, here we are again, less than two weeks later, facing yet another attempt to raise the occupancy tax. This version may look different, but the result is still the same. Lynchburg would become one of the most heavily taxed localities in Virginia for overnight stays. And we ask, why? Why are we being asked to carry the burden of the city's budget shortfalls? Why is one industry being targeted to make up for broader financial mismanagement or lack of long-term planning? It seems that we want to bring in millions on the backs of Lynchburg family members, all while publicly going back and forth about whether or not we want to invest millions into a pool. I was taught a simple principle growing up: spend less than what you make. If we have a budget issue in the city, let's look into decreasing spending rather than finding cheap ways to cover shortcomings at the expense of real people who have worked hard for their investments. Let me be clear: I speak on behalf of over 30 property owners in this city and countless others who call Lynchburg home, and we feel unheard. We are not asking for special treatment. We're asking for shared responsibility, thoughtful policy, and a government that listens. Please vote no on this proposal and work with us on a real, sustainable solution for Lynchburg's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I apologize for my attire. I came straight from work. I represent Cornerstone Hospitality, who manages the Craddock Terry Hotel. And I want to start just by saying, my father was the president of the town council and a deacon in the church of the town that I grew up in. So I appreciate that this is not necessarily probably the favorite thing to be doing, and I appreciate your listening to what we have to say. That being the case, I know that you have the best interests of your constituents in mind. And what I'm here to do is remind you that 3,000 of those constituents depend on hospitality and tourism in Lynchburg alone. 7.9% of the workforce is directly related to hospitality and tourism. You know, why do I mention that? You know, Lynchburg is a declining occupancy town. Smith Travel Research, which is what we all use in the hospitality industry to measure occupancy versus, you know, different cities, different localities, different businesses, shows that we're 56% in declining. Roanoke, by, you know, just comparison, 60.9%. Charlottesville, 63.7%. Statewide, 62.1%. Placing this tax places an undue burden on the ADRs that we have to charge, the average daily rates, and makes us less competitive with these other markets. And we're already less competitive. And that hurts the people who are your constituents. That does hurt your taxpayers. So I guess what I'm here to do is just ask you to work with hospitality industry, right? And why do I say that? Because there's no provision in this proposed rule that allows for the credit card charges, for instance, 3.5% on average, that we don't collect on taxes that we charge guests. There is no provision for strengthening of tourism in this. I've worked in cities, Los Angeles, Boston, New York, Miami. I've worked all over the country. When an increase like this is proposed, there's always a component that at least benefits the hospitality industry to help offset. So I encourage you to work with your hospitality partners. Say no to this now so that we can make a concerted effort and make a good decision that benefits the constituents. It benefits the budget, and it can benefit hospitality. And I will just conclude by saying, I do appreciate your service. Like I said, I remember my dad going out at many a late town council meeting, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Terry. I'm the president of the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association. We represent hotels and restaurants and attractions from around the state. I want to reiterate a couple of the points that a previous speaker made. One of those is what your occupancy is. You are below the statewide average in terms of occupancy, which means you are not really setting a mark that is very, very high. So placing this sort of a tax puts an undue burden on an industry that is really not that strong. You may view it as strong, but it is really not as strong as the rest of the state. We have other markets like Roanoke, Charlottesville, others that are substantially higher than that, and really have to look at that. As he stated, tourism marketing is a big piece of this. You really are not carving out some of this money for tourism marketing, which is typically what happens in a situation like this. I've just been involved in a situation in Fairfax County where they carved out 1% for tourism marketing and sent that. He mentioned the credit card fees. Credit card fees are extremely expensive. For them to collect your tax, they are paying 3% to 3.5% charge on those credit card fees. And virtually every person staying in a hotel is using a credit card. So you're placing an additional undue burden on the hotels in the market. One of the, maybe the most concerning areas is that there really has not been a study on this. You haven't really looked at, you know, what's the potential impact on tourism? What happens if someone could go and stay over in Campbell County and pay a much smaller fee? What happens to the students and the parents that are coming into Liberty University and they're on a fixed budget? Or that, you know, international students or others that are coming in? Really is impactful to the industry overall. And so, you know, for that reason, you know, I really, we are very much opposed to this without some sort of concessions, things that the industry could use, some looks at tourism, and quite frankly, more engagement with the industry in a study to see, you know, what is the potential impact. When you do this, what was proposed the other day would have made you the highest transient occupancy tax in the nation. What you've now proposed is the highest in the state of Virginia. So really not really a good standard to do. So for that reason, we would ask you to not vote on behalf of this. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Cam Colquitt, Ward One. Mayor Taylor, good to see you. I lead a nonprofit here in town called Campus Outreach Lynchburg. It's a Christian college ministry and own and operate an Airbnb downtown in Federal Hill Historic District on Harrison Street. Want to just share with the utmost respect for y'all's task, two reasons why voting no is the best course of action for your city and for its citizens. The first is this: I try to keep it simple with some data. It won't work, and other cities aren't doing it. Perhaps that's why. Number one, it won't work. Bottom line, the previous speaker mentioned projections. I did some cautious ones, making some assumptions. I project it'll generate about $700,000 of additional revenue for the city. My sense is, as far as I can tell, looking at the budget, you guys are looking to come up with about $13 million. This gets you about 5% of the way. Now, what might the cost be to this increased $700,000 of revenue? Here are some costs. Conservatively, I estimate 15% of short-term rental owners, which are your citizens, would convert to long-term rentals or sell, which goes into that calculation. 10% of prospective short-term guests, this is called lodging leakage, would just choose to stay somewhere else that's cheaper nearby, even if they have business in Lynchburg. 5% of prospective hotel guests would do the same. Again, these are just sort of some conservative assumptions that go into these calculations. And based on that conservative lodging leakage, I project that $4 million less would be spent on local tourism here in Lynchburg, which impacts that bottom line. So you might be generating more revenue, but part of the inevitable collateral damage of that is that you're actually collecting less sales tax on that $4 million that's all of a sudden not being spent here locally. The city's 2024 revenue on lodging tax was 3.8 million. I project that would go up to about 4.8 with this increase. But if you reduce 61,000 guest nights at an average of $75 per guest night spent locally, that's where you get that reduction in $4 million of local tourism. One other note: last meeting, it was somewhat dismissed, and gently dismissed, when comparisons were made to localities like Virginia Beach and New York City citing that they're just different in terms of their size and tourism attraction. I think some of that's fair. Let's just compare it to some localities in Virginia. A few have been mentioned already. I'll mention some others. Williamsburg, 5% at $2 a night. Roanoke, 8%, Charlottesville, 9%. Stanton, 6.7, Blacksburg, 7, Fredericksburg, 8, Harrisonburg, 7, none of those with nightly fees. The only comparable locality is Danville at 8% and $3 a night. I think you guys know part of the reason Danville can charge a little bit more of a premium. They've got a casino there in town. A few other comparable cities on the East Coast with similar size and tourism demand. Asheville, 6%, Burlington, North Carolina, 6% to 7%. Goldsboro, 5% to 6%, Rome, Georgia, 4% statewide, $5 a night. Johnson City, Tennessee, 7%, Dover, Delaware, 8%. Elmira Corning, New York, 4%. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Blair Gottse, and I'm here tonight as an owner of the Virginian Hotel to express concern about the proposed increases to the lodging and occupancy taxes. At the last meeting, many of us spoke in opposition to a previous tax proposal that would have harmed our businesses and the broader community. Thank you for listening. Tonight, I urge the same caution. The new proposal to raise the lodging tax from 6.5% to 8.5% and the occupancy tax from $1 to $3 would make us one of the most heavily taxed markets in Virginia. Meanwhile, just minutes away in Campbell County, where five internationally branded hotels with nearly 500 rooms and one new proposed development with 115 rooms sit, there's only a 2% lodging tax and no occupancy tax at all. That's a serious competitive challenge. Guests don't check city boundaries. They look for value. If a traveler can save nearly $10 a night just by choosing a hotel outside of the city, which really does not feel outside of the city, we risk losing not just lodging revenue, but restaurant, retail, and tourism dollars too. Take the Hilton Garden Inn on Board's Road, for example. If its 126 rooms were fully displaced to a nearby hotel with lower taxes, the city could lose over $400,000 annually, not to mention reduced property values and broader economic impacts. While full guest displacement is unlikely, the trend is clear. Development is shifting to areas with lower taxes. At the Virginian, our ability to provide an affordable experience has been and continues to be our competitive advantage that helps us bring people into the city to spend money and generate tax revenue. Burdening one industry for short-term relief risks long-term damage. We aren't here just to say no and would offer a compromise. If you really need this additional revenue, I'll say the if with the emphasis, and it is needed from our sector, consider taking lodging tax to 7.5% and occupancy tax to $2. This keeps us competitive with other markets while still contributing more to the city. We recognize that a proposed lower real estate tax rate could provide some temporary relief. I feel certain that would be temporary. But it won't be nearly enough to fully offset the impact any tax increase will have on our bottom line. We care about this city and want to be strong partners, but urge you to please proceed carefully. Consider our suggestion and listen to the other voices in our industry and in this room before making any decisions. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Shelley Waldeck, and I am the Director of Sales and Marketing at the Virginian Hotel. Since reopening in 2018, the Virginian has been proud to serve not just as a place for our guests to stay, but as a catalyst for tourism revitalization and economic growth. As someone who works every day to bring group business to Lynchburg, I can tell you this. We are already at a competitive disadvantage compared to cities like Charlottesville, Roanoke, Williamsburg, Virginia Beach, and Richmond. These destinations offer broader infrastructure, more attractions, and importantly, greater name recognition. What sets Lynchburg apart right now is our charm and affordability. I want to say that I appreciate the city's investment in the new downtown amphitheater. It has real potential to boost tourism. But until it's fully completed, well-managed, and shown to drive consistent traffic and revenue, I strongly caution raising lodging taxes. Right now, downtown faces real challenges. With ongoing construction and increasing number of vacant storefronts, honestly, it feels more like a work zone than a destination. A tax hike at this stage risks further pushing away the visitors we depend on. If this increase passes as proposed, Lynchburg would rank among the highest in the state. And for group event planners, this is not a footnote. Lodging taxes are carefully scrutinized during the planning process as they direct- as they directly impact the overall cost of a stay. When those taxes are high and not offset by compelling attractions, we risk being dismissed early in the decision-making process. I was born and raised in Loudoun County and spent a good part of my adult life in Charlottesville, two places that have demonstrated how smart collaborative planning can lead to real progress. Since I moved to the area and helped reopen the hotel, I've truly fallen in love with Lynchburg. I believe in its potential, and I want to be part of the effort that helps it thrive, not just now, but long into the future. I ask you to consider the broader implications of this proposal, not just for the hotels and short-term rentals, but for the small businesses or organizations and people who depend on tourism to make ends meet. Let's make decisions that nurture that ecosystem and not strain it. Thank you for your time and for the chance to be part of this important conversation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Michael Navarez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. On behalf of the Perry Restaurant Group, I want to express our strong opposition to the proposed increase in the city Lynchburg lodging tax and along with the per-room surcharge increase. Since opening our first restaurant in downtown Lynchburg in 2007, the Perry Restaurant Group has grown to operate multiple restaurant concepts in several cities. Here in Lynchburg, we have proudly opened 10 restaurants, all located downtown, and we currently employ 125 individuals across our Lynchburg operations. Each of these restaurants has launched through private investor financing with no public funding from the city. Our success in Lynchburg is closely tied to the health and vibrancy of downtown and particularly to the steady stream of visitors who dine with us while staying overnight in the city. These guests, ranging from business travelers and wedding attendees to college families and tourists, are a vital part of our customer base. When overnight visits to Lynchburg decline, so too does foot traffic in our restaurants, the hours available to our staff, and ultimately, the meals tax revenue collected by the city. To date, Perry Restaurant Group has contributed to over $6 million in combined meals and sales taxes to the city of Lynchburg. That revenue supports essential public services and demonstrates the value of a strong restaurant sector in the city's financial well-being. Any measure that discourages overnight stays, such as this proposed lodging tax increase, jeopardizes that contribution. We would also like to express our appreciation to the Office of Economic Development and Margette Upsher for their support on two specific occasions, helping us obtain city approval to use the Bluffock space for outdoor dining at Fratelli and assisting with needed sidewalk and curb repairs outside Duke's Diner. These efforts reflect the kind of collaborative collaboration that enables private investment to thrive. While we recognize the importance of addressing fiscal needs, we respectfully urge City Council to reconsider this proposal. A significant increase in hotel taxes risks making Lynchburg less attractive to visitors, which will have a direct and damaging impact on the broader hospitality economy, including restaurants, retail businesses, and the city's own tax base. Thank you for the, for your time and the opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and fellow residents. My name is David Marple. I'm a resident. Thank you for the chance to speak on this topic again tonight. I'm sorry I missed hearing anyone speak in favor of the tax, if there was anyone. As a local Realtor, business, and property owner, I strongly oppose the current proposed lodging tax increase, especially coming just two weeks after this very measure was clearly voted down. Asking the same stakeholders to come back and defend their positions again signals a troubling unwillingness to hear from the community. These visitor taxes may seem harmless, but they carry real consequences. Lynchburg has worked very hard to build a thriving tourism economy. From Liberty University, visitors to downtown events, these sort of things, when we raise lodging taxes, we risk driving those visitors elsewhere and hurting our local hotels, short-term rentals, restaurants, and shops. This doesn't just affect tourists. Local families who host Airbnbs, run bed and breakfasts will also feel this burden. My family alone has contributed tens of thousands of dollars in taxes through our rentals in the last eight years. This is revenue created through hard work, not something that should be penalized. Let's not revisit what was already decided. Let's focus on smarter, more sustainable ways to grow revenue by supporting economic activity, not discouraging it. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. I have very little to do about lodging. I do want to express some thoughts about taxes.
Sir, could you state your name and locality, please?
I'm Grayson Ferguson.
Yes, sir.
And I run a woodworking operation here in Lynchburg. I have very little to do about lodging, but I do help to build them. When the Virginian Hotel was being built, we did thousands of linear feet of moldings. We did all the woodworking in the coffee house, the computer room, the, the desk, what do you call the desk, where you go and register? We did a lot of nice woodworking in there. My problem right now is the taxes that I have to pay in order to keep my operation afloat. I have a 15-acre tract land off of Campbell Avenue that the city has an easement and a 30-inch sewer line going through my property that I have to pay taxes on, but I can't use it. I pay $40-something thousand a year on personal property tax for the equipment in my facility that is aging to the point where I will need to replace it soon. The roof, I have about 80,000 square feet of roof area that I have to pay water runoff. I'm not sure what that is. I've tried to gather all the information. I didn't know about this meeting until two hours ago, so I didn't have time to review all the documents containing all the money that we have to pay in taxes. Between the taxes and the workman's comp insurance, fire insurance, I pay about $3,000 a week. I used to employ 25 people. I'm down to 12 because I can't find adequate personnel to put on staff. The schools are not training people to do what we need, and that is, when I was in the ninth grade in high school, I had took classes in the ninth and 10th grade, actually, industrial arts, which contained my capital drawing, electrical, woodworking, and metalworking. I hired five kids out of high school last year, and two of them couldn't read a ruler. They lasted about two months. The fifth one was a kid that was a grandson of an old girlfriend of mine. He didn't show up for work on a Monday morning. And I called him and said, "Julian, are you coming to work today?" And a little pitiful voice said, "No." And I said, "Well, what's wrong? Are you sick?" He said, "No."
Mr. Ferguson, your time is up.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up.
Time is up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that it was a time limit. Let me make this last statement. The kid told me, I said, "Why, why are you not at work?" He said, "I just don't like working." Anyway.
Yes, sir.
I do need to talk to someone about these, and I'm not sure who that might be.
Right there.
Okay. Now, we can do this later on, right? Okay. I can't keep this. Can we make some other time?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm sure most of you know who I am, Andrea Hurt Lynchburg. And I'm going to try and keep my temper. I'm also known as Sparky for a reason. That's my nickname, given nickname. What I saw today at a work session was absolutely horrifying. I don't know what y'all are doing or what some of you are doing up there, but you're on the path to destroying Lynchburg. It's not just this hotel stuff. It's what, and for you who haven't known, go, go look on YouTube and look up the work session today. You'll know what I'm talking about. They are proposing, because I didn't hear all of it, but what I ended up hearing, not the 89-ish or the 70-whatever equalization rate. They want to sock you with a 102.5. We haven't even been notified. We haven't had a public hearing. Do you know, did you not hear the people who came here in droves to say what impact that was going to have on their lives? That people were going to have to move? People that lived here 40, 50 years? What are you thinking? What do you think it's going to be when it goes up? Almost 40% in your taxes! And they talk about getting rid of, getting rid of your personal property thing. That is insignificant to the amount of taxes that people are going to have to pay. Insignificant. And I've heard nothing, nothing about reducing costs. I can promise you, there is a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse in this city. I've uncovered some of it myself, not even taking very much time. And I hear nothing about it. Do you know that this man, what he makes? Almost $300,000! The Vice President of the United States makes $284,000.
Andrea?
I'm not done, I still have a minute.
Well, you can't direct your temper towards city manager, okay?
I didn't direct any temper towards him. I just said this man.
Okay.
It's a fact. Look it up.
Don't, don't.
All right.
All comments must be directed to the council and preference council.
This city manager makes almost $300,000. The Vice President of the United States makes $284,000. I think there's something wrong with that. 3% increase, it should be my merit. People who work in this city should have to live in this city. 70% live outside, they have no stake in the game. My understanding is the city manager doesn't own a house here. He doesn't have any stake in the game either. You're either conned, or you are complicit. It has me wonder what is going on here. Is somebody paying somebody off? That's not beyond the possibilities. But y'all need to do something here. Because when that information gets out of almost 103 and people haven't been notified, that was not what we agreed to in all the meetings we were in. You got to get some help, people, that know what they're doing, and get your act together. We elected most of you up there on fiscal conservation.
Thank you.
Please keep your word.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Megan Lucas. I live at 108 Wildwind Place in Lynchburg, Virginia. On behalf of the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, we want to thank you for your, and the staff, for the hard work all of you are doing in trying to craft the next budget. You're tackling big issues, complex challenges. We appreciate all of you, staff, especially with City Council, working diligently towards collaboration and compromise. That said, we respectfully urge you to reconsider the proposed increase in lodging taxes in the city of Lynchburg. This increase affects more than just our tourists. It directly impacts business travelers. When our local industries bring in team members, clients, or executives from across the country, and indeed, around the globe, they feel this cost. These are not anonymous guests. They are often corporate decision-makers whose experiences in Lynchburg influence future expansions, future jobs, future capital investment decisions. The Alliance is unable to endorse an initiative that increases the burden on our business community, especially when it targets a single sector. Singling out one industry, one that is still recovering from a pandemic-related disruption sets a concerning precedent and weakens our regional economy. As all of you know, a strong economy is the foundation of a strong community. Policies that risk discouraging travel, limiting growth, and increasing costs for employers jeopardize our shared ability to invest in education, infrastructure, jobs, and public safety. We urge continued collaboration and compromise to find balanced solutions that promote fiscal responsibility without compromising our economic future. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the lodging tax?
Mr. Mayor, it's a request from Natasha Korn. But her email be read into the record this evening?
Discussion?
If we were to reconsider that procedure, we should go to voicemails first, and then they're not, that is not in our rules procedure for reading emails.
I had requested, I had consulted the.
Mr. Mayor, and our rules of procedure do state that if there's an email that a citizen has requested be read into the record, that a council member, before the public hearing closes, can summarize the email for the record. But whether it comes now or after voicemails, I'll leave that up to council. I do have voicemails.
Yes. Do you have any voicemails? Please read them, and then she read.
Sure. I have eight voicemails. The first is from Rebecca Nice.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Nice, and I work at the Virginian Hotel. I'm calling to voice my opposition in the proposed lodging tax increase that will be voted on June 10th at the City Council meeting. I oppose this increase because I believe that it will deter guests and groups from staying at the Virginian. I want my hotel to be successful and to continue to support downtown Lynchburg. Thank you for listening and caring about the city of Lynchburg. Have a wonderful day.
The next is from Britt Bernie.
I am calling for the City Council meeting on June 10th for 4.2 in regards to the lodging tax. My name is Britt Bernie. I'm the General Manager of the Craddock Terry Hotel in downtown Lynchburg. One thing I can say about hospitality is that we have slow seasons. And any of the tenured hospitality professionals in the room before, in front of you, can probably name the exact months that we see those slow seasons. The beauty you can find in a slow season, and trust me, there aren't very many, is that you can look at your staff and promise it is only temporary. The staff I helped with their food stamps paperwork, the staff asking for the closest food bank, asking for their utility assistance in the middle of February. My staff that suffered from even a couple months of a slow season could barely even get by. The horror that we're finding in this season as opposed to other years past, that's not just a season. Occupancy is already down across the city and continuing through what should be our busiest season. I know you have crunched the numbers, and you feel like the revenue you're projecting is accurate. But is it based on historical data or current data? Are you accounting for a diminishing occupancy? One that will only continue to diminish with a higher tax? As we all file in to read your numbers and facts, I know it's going to start sounding all alike. All those numbers are going to start to run together, and we're all going to start sounding the same. You're going to start thinking we're just saying dramatic. But just remember, you would be remiss to ignore what a group of hospitality professionals who have probably been in this industry longer than you've been on City Council have to say. We're telling you that your numbers won't come to fruition, and it's not going to help anyone. And you're going to cause a growth impact on this community and our businesses. And we're open to a number. But have you really listened to us? Thank you.
The next is from Vicki Runk.
Hi, this is Brian and Vicki Runk in regards to opposition to proposed lodging tax and room charge increase for a council meeting on Tuesday, June 10th. Dear Mayor, Taylor, and members of the Lynchburg City Council, I will be unable to attend the council meeting this evening, but I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed increase in the city lodging tax from $6.50 to $8.50, along with the increase in the nightly room charge from $1 to $3. While I understand the city's need to generate revenue, this proposal would significantly harm Lynchburg's hospitality industry and deter future development within the city limits. Recent developments trend already demonstrate a migration of new hotel projects to the surrounding county, most notably, Daily Seven recently announced a $19 million, 113-room Holiday Inn and a new restaurant to be built in Campbell County near the city airport. That section of Ward's Road, though commonly perceived by guests as part of Lynchburg, falls outside the city limits and already hosts five nationally branded hotels, with another one on the way. This movement is driven largely by the more favorable tax environment in Campbell County, where the lodging tax is just 2%[1785.85] where the lodging tax is just two percent and no nightly room charge is imposed. Obviously, Campbell County knows what they're doing. If Lynchburg raises its lodging tax to eight-point-five percent and the room charge to three dollars, it will rank among the highest in the state, creating a competitive disadvantage and accelerating the relocation of new hospitality development outside the city. Guests are naturally drawn to newer hotels and most cannot distinguish city boundaries. They simply choose based on location, quality, and cost. Further, Lynchburg hotel occupancy rates have been trending downward over the past year and increasingly declining. The lodging tax will only further impact profitability, particularly for operators trying to attract group business and meetings. The hospitality industry is already navigating post-COVID recovery challenges. I will say that again. The hospitality industry is already navigating post-COVID recovery challenges. And yet, this proposal would only make it harder to compete and grow. Rather than implementing measures that deter investment, I urge City Council to consider incentives that encourage growth and development within the city. A business-friendly environment will yield more long-term benefit.
Number four is from Linda Furry.
Hi, this is Linda Furry at four-hundred College Park Drive in Lynchburg. And I'm calling in reference to the meeting of tonight, June tenth. And the item number that I'm calling in reference to is four-point-two. Um, we were made aware of this late and appreciate your consideration of not passing an increase in the tax rate of potential business owners. Though we're not potential, but we are business owners, not only in the hotel business, but the Airbnb business. And it would seem that you're trying to tax the business people of Lynchburg. Um, and, and that would just squander and, and hinder the work that we're trying to do and the opportunity for business in the city of Lynchburg. Also, it just seems like the lowest common denominator to pick off the tree. Um, I would love to see more interest in raising tax businesses in the city of Lynchburg. In other words, making it profitable for people to come and do business in the city of Lynchburg rather than penalizing us. Thank you for your time.
The next is from Charles Grant.
Hi, my name is Charles Grant. Um, I'm at one-oh-three Portico Street, Lynchburg, Virginia, two-four-five-oh-two. Um, calling about the meeting on six-ten-twenty-five, Agenda Item Number Four-point-two. I wanted to voice my concern about the intent to raise the tax rate to eight-and-a-half percent as a business owner myself, and somebody that provides for my family. Uh, through short-term rentals, uh, it's already become increasingly harder to be profitable doing this and to support my family. And, uh, this tax rate increase would take us to one of the highest in the state of Virginia. Um, and through the research that I've seen and watching the last council meeting on this very recently, not long ago, um, I, I don't believe there was any, um, clear indication to the reasoning behind this, the benefit of it, and the potential implications of what this would do if put into place. Thank you.
The next is from Liz McCormack.
Hi, Liz McCormack, fifty-thirty-two Binford Road, Lynchburg, Virginia. Um, I have an Airbnb. I think the meeting number is four-point-two. I think that's what it is. And I just, I do not want to see these taxes go up. Uh, I think the, uh, the meeting is this afternoon, and it's been requested that I call in. So please, we are not, we're just all barely making any money anyway. So, um, anyway, that's, um, thank you.
Uh, number seven is from Tom Rizzolero.
Yes, my name is Tom Rizzolero. I'm calling about a meeting date being held on six-ten-twenty-five, Agenda Item Normal, Normal, Numeral, Roman Numeral Number Four-point-two. I own two Airbnb properties at fifteen-hundred Main Street, Units Three-oh-seven and Three-eleven. I'm calling in regards to increase on tax. Um, my comment's pretty simple. There, there is no precedence or data on what you guys are trying to accomplish, um, making us, um, almost the highest taxed, um, city in the state of Virginia, besides Virginia Beach. I also own two business properties. I'm a business owner in Lynchburg, appropriated in the state of Virginia in Lynchburg. And if you guys want to continue to proceed, um, with these taxes that you're trying to put on, um, which will hinder me, um, renting these places, I might have to consider on where I have my business incorporated as well. Thank you for your time. I hope you consider this and do not pass this bill.
Lastly, voicemail number eight is from Emily Grant.
Hello, my name is Emily Grant. I, um, am a resident of Lynchburg, Virginia, and property owner. Um, I'm calling in regards to, uh, the meeting date of, uh, June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, um, in my input on Agenda Item Number Four-point-two, um, in regards to, uh, trying to pass the higher taxes for short-term rentals. Um, I strongly advocate against this. Um, we, my husband Charles and I are, um, Lynchburg residents, and we've chosen to invest in properties in this area to fix them up and have, um, better values for our community, as well as, um, renting them out as retirement plans for ourselves and to provide a good life for our children. And so by increasing this tax, it not only negatively affects the, uh, long-term goals that we have, but it affects our children as well. So, um, I think anything that can be done to keep the taxes the same and not increase it would just be benefiting us and a lot of the other people that we know own many, many properties in this area. Um, so I kindly hope that you'll consider my vote against increasing this tax and that others will see the same way as well. So, thank you. Bye-bye.
Mr. Vice, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that is all the voicemails that we have. One quick housekeeping item. I do see folks in the audience struggling to hear council members when they're speaking into the mic, and the guys in the booths have our mics turned all the way up. So if council members can make an effort to really lean into the mics, our audience would appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, here from Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, am I able to read according to the rules, or does it specifically say summarize?
It does say summarize.
Okay.
Uh, I, I can make this brief, but I wouldn't count, um, encourage my fellow council members to go back and read, uh, Ms. Natasha Cohen's, uh, email. She is a resident of Bedford, but is currently planning a multimillion-dollar project in Ward Four, a lodging project. And she has concerns, obviously, about the tax increase. She does talk about a more moderate range, being the seven to seven-point-five percent, uh, possibly with a two-dollar nightly fee. Uh, but she does, again, draw the parallel that there's a lot of opportunity in Bedford, and she may move her project to Bedford. Uh, she details some of the opportunities that are available in Bedford as opposed to Lynchburg, and the incentives that are there with moving her project. Um, da-da-da-da. She goes on to say that she would encourage council, um, to look hard at where the city's spending can be reduced, and she parallels this with her own family. Uh, she talks about how households have to cut back, and local government should do the same, and that we should not move, um, the tax burden to residents and visitors, um, on residents and visitors. She concludes by talking about, um, asking us to consider the long-term, term impact, uh, not just for visitors, but on potential investors such as herself that are looking to bring something special to the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Some numbers I'd like to run. Uh, over the course of this conversation, we, I remember, this might be wrong, the average nightly stay, I think, was a hundred-and-thirty? What, what, uh, what was the, do we have that number? I remember we talked about it.
I believe the number that we had was a hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. A hundred-and-sixty-four dollars?
All right, let's even play with, with a hundred-and-forty. Split the baby. If we went to seven-and-a-half and two dollars a night on a one-nightly stay, the math would essentially be a dollar-seventy-five-ish difference? Does that sound about right?
What was your nightly rate?
Seven-five.
One-seventy-five?
One-forty.
It would be about a dollar-forty.
That'd be a dollar-fifty before the, did you say two dollars a night?
Yes.
Be a dollar-fifty-two-fifty.
Dollar-fifty-two-fifty difference per night. So it'd be a dollar-fifty-two, what, fifty-two or forty-two?
A dollar-fifty, a dollar-fifty and fifty cents.
All right.
If you did, a dollar-four, a hundred-and-forty dollars, seven-and-a-half percent plus two dollars.
Gotcha. So just for conversation, just for conversation's sake, I'm going to say a dollar-fifty. So for a five-night stay, if you stayed for five days for a conference or something to that effect, the difference would be seven bucks. Sound about right? And I'm doing it really fast.
Between eight, between six-and-a-half and seven-and-a-half.
The increase, so if it's a dollar-fifty per night increase and it's a five-night stay. Sorry. And the reason I'm doing this real time is so folks can see it themselves. Seven dollars and sixty cent difference is what I'm told. I'm trying to find the difference, if you will, per night, if we just said it's a hundred-and-forty dollars a night.
And we increase the lodging tax by one percent and the, and the bed tax by one dollar? It'd be two dollars and forty cents a night. So a dollar-forty on the lodging tax and a dollar on the bed tax.
Understood. Thank you. So, two-forty a night. So it's basically a ten-dollar difference when you're talking about multiple stay, you know, three to, three or four nights. From a staff perspective, now, I'm going to look to the industry folks to get a yes or a no. That's more palatable. I mean, it's not nearly as high. I'm looking at Roanoke. Roanoke is at eight percent. I'm not sure what the comment was made about Roanoke being what it was, but Roanoke's at eight percent. Harrisonburg is still more. Lynchburg would still be lower than, than those localities.
The range of what similar cities are.
Okay.
Across the Commonwealth.
Because that's the number that was shared from it, from the industry. It was seven-and-a-half and two. Um, if there was a desire for these, if there was a need, an actual need, if and need were the two words, words, Blair, may have left, were the two key words, there he is, were the two key words that he said. Staff, could we take this increase and appropriate it specifically to either have opposite economic development or, uh, or tourism in some capacity and then offset that adjustment with the general fund? Does that make sense? So that way, a portion of this is strategically targeting tourism? Because those were, those were some of the, the things that were shared.
So where we run into difficulty is, could we earmark this funding for tourism-related projects that are currently planned and still, um, use it to help close a potential budget gap? Yes. Could we identify new tourism-related projects and use this funding to fund those projects and then have it help us close a budget gap? No, this is just new money for new projects.
So, because as I understand it, if a county, not a city, if a county was going to be doing this, once they hit a certain level, all of it has to go to, to tourism in some, to some degree. That, that's the research I've done. So I know there is precedence insofar as other localities, but cities are, of course, different. So that's kind of where I was going. If there's a way we can take these dollars, or some of them, to offset a tourism budget to ensure that the concern was, hey, like, are these dollars really going to be helping us? Then great. Offset the difference and take those dollars and apply them elsewhere in the budget. Just a thought. However, I'll make a motion for, uh, seven dollars, I'm sorry, seven-point-five percent and two dollars per night.
Speak to your second.
I, I like the idea that Mr. Paul just brought up as far as, like, I don't know necessarily has to come from the revenue produced as much as, is there just a way to offer some incentives, um, at all? Mr. Patrick, you know, whether it comes from this revenue produced, or is there a way to offer some incentives to the industry?
Off the, I wouldn't want to answer that question without having some time to think through it.
You have to come back with the other stuff that we asked about tonight. Maybe that's something we could discuss, uh, another time as well. I'd be interested to hear about that, with some of the concerns that were expressed.
I've, I've expressed my concerns with raising this tax, um, as well as with the real estate tax, but there's one item that I would like to kind of highlight, if you will, uh, the current discussion of possibly allocating these dollars toward a current project for something that's, that's already there, uh, for, for tourism. Um, that same type of logic is being applied in a number of areas of the budget. It is put forward that rather than equalizing and, again, still receiving more revenue than the previous fiscal year, uh, as a city, that we should instead put forward five-hundred-thousand dollars for senior tax relief. So we're going to raise your taxes by an average of sixteen percent, but then we're going to set aside five-hundred-thousand dollars for some relief, um, for those individuals, which there are many, who had valuations go up a hundred percent. Uh, there's the same type of logic that's taking place with potentially shifting the burden to the personal property tax, where, again, there's no discussion about how we spend more wisely. It's how do we build the idea of relief into an increase? And that's what's happening here. That's what's happening with the personal property tax discussion. That is what's happening with the real estate tax assessment discussion. And for the very reasons that were discussed tonight, again, as we look at business, as we look at the principles behind taxation, there has been a growth in revenue to the city, even with the tax increase that took place previously that was three cents slower than equalization, because we have a city of builders. We have a city that wants to grow and thrive, where people want to invest. And if we continue to protect that environment, the revenue will grow. And I believe that it is up to us to trust the builders of this community, to trust the investors of this community, to trust the citizens of this community, to make, to make Lynchburg what it is and make Lynchburg thrive. I don't think it's our place, um, to, to confiscate, uh, more than is necessary and then call it a cut or call it, um, call it relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just so you know, the reasoning gap is because we're not supposed to, like, clap cheers and jeers, although I definitely appreciated it, because I appreciated your comments as well, Ms. Timmer. Um, lean into the mic. Thanks for the reminder. So, here's the issue I got. I just happen to have this spreadsheet, and I thank you, uh, to somebody out in the audience who sent us a beautiful letter on behalf of the Virginian Hotel that gave us some information about how much this proposal is going to cost them. And it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars out of their bottom line. Right? So those are the numbers that I have to work with. They're going to absorb that. The, the market determines how much somebody will pay for a hotel room.
Right? So, if we increase the cost of the hotel room with taxes and the market's not gonna support that increase, well, then the hotel absorbs that. And that comes out of their bottom line. And right now, they're estimating about $100,000. Now, um, the other issue that I have with that is what was just pitched to us in the work session. And I also found out via text message that apparently the video cut off right before we voted. And the video that cut off right before we voted was on a motion to send out a proper reassessment notice to notify real estate property owners of the floated $1.025 real estate tax that would come with the, with the, that would... It's absolutely germane. Talking about taxes and how it's gonna affect, affect the Virginian Hotel. So, that would be, that would, that would be 102.5, would be a 34% increase of the real estate tax rate. And the video cut off, and they're trying to silence me again, just like they cut the video off earlier. There was three of us up here that voted to send out proper notices of reassessment and how much that would cost the citizens. So, you would actually get a notice about what this proposed real estate tax increase would cost you. Now, what I will say is, when I look at the Virginian Hotel, the reason I can't support this increase, the reason that I can't support this increase is because when you're being faced with a $100,000 lodging tax increase, but then there's a proposal of a $52,000 increase on your real estate tax, I can't propose to support a lodging tax increase. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So...
Hold on.
I'm holding on, Mr. Mayor.
You're not talking about the video upstairs and, and all.
I'm talking about the effect of the...
You were talking about the motel rate. Keep it to the motel rate, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the effect of the motel rate is a $100,000 increase on the Virginian Hotel. That's the example I got. Increase in the real estate tax rate to 102.5 is a $52,000 increase from equalization on the Virginian Hotel. So, for those reasons, I can't support this lodging tax increase, because it's, it's like a double, triple whammy on this industry. And it's not just the Virginian. It's every other hotel out there. It's the Airbnb folks. It's all of you. Right? They don't want you to know about the real estate tax increase that was just floated, obviously. Guess what? That's what they're coming at. They want to take the personal property tax burden on vehicles and dump it on real estate property owners. And guess what hoteliers are? Paying lodging taxes. They're real estate property owners. So, I make a motion, substitute motion, to deny this and keep the rate the same as it is. I make that as a substitute motion.
Do you have a second on the substitute motion?
So, it's very simple. It's not the time to do this. I appreciate, one of the statements that was made was to be cautious. Right? What I just saw upstairs was reckless. We need to be cautious with these tax rates. We need to be cautious with what we do in increasing taxes on our citizens. It's time for the government to reduce spending, and it's not time to increase taxes. And if you think that talking about increasing taxes and reducing spending isn't germane, Mr. Mayor, to the topic at hand and Mr. Feraldi, I don't know what else to discuss. Like, what are we just gonna muzzle me and say, "Don't talk about taxes. Don't talk about spending. Don't talk about anything." That seems to be the theme, Mr. Mayor, on this council that you've been running. It seems to be the theme. So, we need to reduce government spending. We don't need to increase taxes. It's that simple. It's that simple. So, that's why I make that as a motion.
Restate the motion on the floor.
The motion is to deny, the, the substitute motion is to deny the increase.
You second? You wanna speak to your second?
She already made a second.
You wanna speak to your, you wanna speak to your second?
For the reasons I just stated.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Reed?
So, um, if you had watched the work session and you actually listened to everybody's conversation...
If I'm gonna be fair, just...
Sure. Um, you'd find out the validity of, of the facts. So, um, as we talked about, last time we talked about the lodging tax, we're trying to, um, work together. We wanna be, we want to be good statesmen. We wanted to reach out and talk to the community since the last meeting, which some of us did. And we've gotten emails and tried to figure out a way to, um, kind of come together. And I appreciate everybody showing up tonight and, and sharing your thoughts and concerns. And so, um, you know, kind of a counteroffer was given in the scenario of where some of the hotel owners and stakeholders felt like maybe we could come to an agreement, and that's what's on the table here. And so, that's what we're doing. And I think it doesn't put us at the highest rate in the state. It doesn't, um, it, it gets us up a little bit, but we're also trying to consider another way to potentially try to find some incentives as well. So, again, an attempt to, um, work together as best as we can. So, I think that is the efforts that we're making here, as well as trying to, um, make a successful budget at the same time, so that we can, um, provide the needs of the city for our citizens and, and the businesses as well. There, and, and also, um, look for the needs as a whole for, um, what it takes to operate a city. And so, that's what we're all looking at from, from all, every aspect. So, I, I think that's what we're all making the effort, a lot of us are here to do.
Listen, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think it's notable that it's been pretty much unanimous against this idea. And, uh, I think it's extraordinary that we're still even talking about it, considering that the people have spoken so clearly. Like lambs to the slaughter, some are willing to take a sacrifice of themselves only halfway, and that's considered a compromise. And I think a lot of times what happens in, in politics that I've watched over the years is they propose this horrible, terrible thing, and then they compromise halfway down, and that's compromise? No, you guys shouldn't be taking on this tax by yourself. I worked in the General Assembly, and tourism is the golden goose. It's the most awesome revenue that comes into a locality, because of all the things that happen from it. Restaurants, weddings, all this wonderful, uh, things that it brings to our community. And it's money that's coming from, from other things. The minute we start penalizing, uh, these, this tourism, this whole industry that's already on its heels because of COVID, we basically are killing the goose that lays the golden egg. It is a great revenue source, and we're basically gonna, gonna just shoot it. And we're only gonna shoot it with half a bullet. Okay, I'm supposed to feel better about that. I understand. I don't. And I think it's really important to understand that Ward 3, that I represent, has, I believe, most of the hotels in Lynchburg. If not, I think it actually has more hotels than all the other wards combined. And the revenue that comes into this city from Ward 3, from my ward, is, uh, we are the economic engine with Liberty University, Ward's Road, the mall, all the things, all the, you know, all the industries that bring in money and revenue to the city are coming from Ward 3. And we're about to, to penalize a single industry with a scalpel. We're going in just for your throat, okay? We're not trying to spread the pain around. We're going after one, one industry. And, uh, why? Why do, why would you accept that? I, I honestly, I would, I would say to you guys, I would counsel you, don't accept half a death. Uh, half a death is still death. And, and you guys are on a thin line right now because of COVID, because the industry is struggling. And to take this, uh, I, I'm, I'm very worried for your industry. I love the industry. It's, it's the heartbeat of Ward 3. And, uh, I've watched the hotels move and slide out into the county near the airport. Don't tell me it doesn't make a difference. They, they know. They're moving away. They're getting out. They're avoiding our taxes. And, uh, and with that, we lose a lot of revenue, a lot of the things that Donna Witt talks about, that she loves with, uh, with the, the other revenues that come in. And I'm a wedding photographer, and I can tell you, it will impact my business. It will impact wedding business. And wedding business is big business. And a lot of the hotels bring in corporate groups. And, uh, they're paying a lot of money. So, th, this is our bread and butter. It affects Framatone. It affects BWXT. It affects, uh, Delta Star. It affects Liberty University. These people bring in tons of people to stay in our hotels. That's money coming in. That's why we call it the goose that lays the golden egg, because it's coming into our community. Okay? And it's not just that dollar you're gonna get for a Noah Night's Day or 7.5% instead of 8.5%. It's all that other money. Where do you think they're eating? Where do you think they're shopping? Where do you think they're spending all their money? So, why in the world would we kill the goose that lays the golden egg? In a budget that nobody's seriously proposed any spending records. I heard some finally today. I thought they were great. Half the people left for the, didn't even want to hear it, and, and then got on their phones and didn't even look at the presentation. But we won't be silenced. And you at the hotel industry, I thank you for not being silenced, and thank you for showing up again. I'm sorry you had to do it again a second time, but we're listening. I'm listening at least. And I want to make sure you understand that, that you gotta stand up for yourself. And I'm gonna stand up for you, and I'm gonna vote against this 100%, 100%. It'll, it, it's bad for Ward 3. I gotta represent my ward, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
Listen, Dr. Wilder.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it. The, the, the challenge is, we were looking at several areas of revenue for our city. So, we have different levers we can use, whether it's sales tax, whether it's real tax, whether it's real estate tax, whatever the case may be. The hotel rate was one of the levers that we looked at. So, it's not just singling one industry. We're trying to look at several areas. And this is one portion of the revenue stream we were looking at. So, I do not support the substitute motion. I support the first main motion. Again, I'm looking at the quality of life. I'm looking at the investments that have been made downtown in Lynchburg in our community to make it a better place to live, work, and play. So many of my colleagues who are not even on the council right now did not support the Virginian Hotel. They did not support the hotel, other hotel, the, the Craddock Hotel. They were against that. Those are the ones who are voting against that and said the bluff walk was horrible. But we made the investments into this community over the past 20 years to have Lynchburg a destination spot, because we made investments. So, in order to do that, it helps the quality of life, that when people come to the city, like Liberty or, or Framatone or whatever, they come to, to a place where they can come and enjoy the amenities of the quality of life, from the trails, from the libraries, to the schools, to other things in, in the city, as why do you want to come here? So, we made investments. So, this is why we requesting certain funds in certain areas, certain levers, so it won't be all on one area, but on a variety of areas. Thank you.
Any more to discuss, uh, Jacqueline?
Ms. Timmer?
Mr. Mayor, um, just briefly, and, uh, thank you, Dr. Wilder, for your comments. I, I would just like to know, I wasn't on council for any of those votes that you referenced. But with that being said, um, I believe it's extremely important that we protect the investments of the individuals in our community and not assume that it's government's role at all times to take or assume the inflationary increase. And that's what's happening right now. So, with the valuations of the property increases, and there's increases for various reasons, but there has been a general assumption that that is government's money to spend. And that is a false assumption. And so, we need to protect the citizens' investments. We need to protect the private business owners' investments, because that is what I believe is making Lynchburg truly great. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, let us vote on the substitute motion.
To make sure we're clear, we're voting on the substitute motion, so the other motion comes, wherever, what do we vote on, so we all are clear?
Substitute motion to deny.
Substitute motion is to deny.
Sorry, technical difficulties?
Did mine work?
Yeah, you did.
The motion passes 4-3.
So, the motion, the motion to deny is now the main motion on the table. So, if, if there is a majority desire to deny the ordinance, that's what is being voted on now.
So, to deny it or being looked to, for being increased to 7.5 and $2 now?
To get rid of this.
Right.
If, if, if there's a passing of a motion to deny, so if there's yes, four yeses to a motion to deny, this is gone.
And it stays at 6.5 and...
Yes.
No questions?
All right, initiating the vote.
Vote.
So, this motion is to deny this.
The motion passes 5, oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, may please reset the vote. I don't think I have Councilmember Reed's vote. Just a quick technical difficulty. If you just hang tight.
I'll take that one.
All right, I'm gonna reset the vote now. The motion passes 6-1. Okay, moving along? Agenda item number three, consideration of adopting an ordinance amending Section 5.6 of Lynchburg City Code to make technical changes, increase rates, and create a new rate for ambulance and related services offered by the city of Lynchburg's Fire Department. Ms. Donna Witt will provide a summary of the request.
Good evening.
Ms. Wood?
Medicare allows for ambulance billing of up to 100% of Medicare rates. The city of Lynchburg has not changed ambulance rates since 2018 and currently charges well below the 150% allowed. These rate changes were provided by the third-party billing company contracted by the Lynchburg Fire Department and are being provided at the request of the members of City Council. Additional minor technical grammatical changes have been made to the proposed ordinance since May 27, 2025. And there was also an error in the public hearing notice that was later corrected. Thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Risa Hayes. I live in Ward 1. I'm sure you all remember me now. I want to talk about the consequences of not being able to afford an ambulance. Uh, in 2020, we had COVID. In 2021, I caught COVID. I did not go to the hospital, nor did I call an ambulance, because it was something my husband and I knew we could not afford. I did not get the cold version that a lot of people talk about having. My lungs were filled with fluid to the point where I could not lay down flat without feeling like I was drowning. And I chose for two weeks to stay at home and do my best to take care of myself. I then developed a sinus, or a respiratory infection immediately after that and had to be put on extremely high antibiotics. Less than six months later, I then caught RSV, something that is not common for adults to catch, but it was a consequence of my immune system already being damaged from COVID. Immediately after RSV, I caught another respiratory infection. This all happened within six months. Now, I can't say to what my actions caused. I do not know guaranteed if I had gone to a hospital, if I would not have caught the other... I do not know guaranteed if I had gone to a hospital, if I would not have caught the other illnesses that I did. But I do know that we had to weigh my health compared to cost. There are permanent repercussions to these illnesses that I had. My vascular system is permanently damaged. I now have a condition called POTS. For those who don't know what it is, it's a fainting disorder that can be caused just from going up and down the stairs. It can be caused from heat exposure. Summertime, I have now had to purchase a cooling vest in order to go outside. Something that a 30-year-old probably wouldn't consider having to get. When you increase rates of something that is already unobtainable to many people my age, you are making it even more likely for us to choose money over our health. In 2012, I did have to take an ambulance ride in DC. We went one block. That is not an exaggeration, one block. I had an illness that was so severe, I could not walk, I could not see. That one block cost my family $1,500 in 2012. When you raise these rates, you are making a dangerous decision to put other people's health in line or to risk other people's health. This isn't, let's see how much Medicare or Medicaid can cover. These are for people who do not have Medicare or Medicaid. We have our other insurances that won't cover ambulances. They claim they cover ambulances, but if you actually look at it, it will say if they deem it an emergency that required an ambulance. So if the insurance company doesn't deem it, you're out of pocket. If the ambulance isn't covered by your insurance and app network, you have to pay that too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this? Do we have any voicemails?
There are none.
Public session is now closed. May I have a motion, please? No motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend we adopt the resolution to increase the, again, looking at various methods that we can receive revenue for our city. I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Is there a second? Anyone else want to speak to us? Any more discussion? Well, then let us vote.
I think maybe the second, so I guess the motion fails.
Yeah, for lack of a second.
It fails.
Moving on to agenda item number four.
Why was this on our agenda if no one was gonna motion for it? Whose idea was this? Do we know? I mean, it was my understanding that Councilman Missions said this was what we should do? So why didn't he motion for it?
This is improper. We've already, we've already discussed that over the next issue.
I have no, didn't anybody make, made a motion? Must the Wilder, must the Wilder spoke to it?
I thought they recommended it.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Didn't anybody second it?
There's no second.
Nobody, nobody seconded, so. Yes, it needed a second. It wasn't seconded.
I had questions, but we went right to the motion, so.
Moving on.
Agenda item number four, consideration of adopting a resolution to approve the 2025-2029 Five-Year Community Development Block Grant and Home Program Consolidated Plan and Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan. Ms. Melville Walker provides a summary of the request.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and members of city council. Tonight, excuse me, city council is conducting a public hearing on the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and Program Year 2025 Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. The plan outlines the city's needs, goals, and objectives for community development in the housing and non-housing areas. There was public consultation through several workshops on topics of affordable housing, workforce development, housing for the homeless, and other special needs population. Community development, an online survey, and public meetings conducted by the Community Development Advisory Committee. The needs identified in these consultations were provided to you in your report. The proposed projects. Thank you.
It doesn't want to open.
No, it doesn't.
If you get underneath you, do you mind? I'm so sorry.
I can, I'll go ahead and read the needs that were identified by the stakeholders. Were affordable, quality housing inventory for all income levels, and is insufficient. Unsheltered populations are growing.
There we go.
Emergency shelters, beds are needed after the closure of the shelter that was here. Landlord education and outreach to encourage participation in rental assistance programs. How to be a good tenant homeowner education in order to maintain housing. Financial literacy programs are in need for all age groups, including schools. And workforce development to create and fill sustainable wage jobs. Sidewalks, streetscape, and other public infrastructure improvements are needed. And these are all needs that were identified in the strategic plan within the consolidated plan. The proposed projects for fiscal year 2026 include the Dunbar Community Schoolyard, Phase Two, Marion's House Coordinated Intake and Access, Blue Ridge Mountain Council Boy Scouts Program, Rush Homes, Carolyn's Place, Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership, the Len Cag First-Time Home Buyer Down Payment Assistance, and then Administration. In accordance with the council adopted Citizen Participation Plan, two public notices were placed in the news in advance on Friday, May 9, for the 30-day public comment period, and on Sunday, May 25, for the 15-day public hearing notice and through social media. The Community Development Advisor Committee conducted a public meeting on May 20 to review and discuss these two plans. Council members Dr. Wilder and Ms. Timmer are the council-appointed members of the CDAC and participated in the review of these documents. At the conclusion of the public hearing, Councilmember Wilder, as chairman of CDAC, will provide with you the recommendation for approval. City staff has not received any written public comments prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone would like to speak in favor?
Point of inquiry. Point of inquiry. I think Councilman Fralty makes a really good point when he asks how these things get on the agenda. I've tried. Oh, I thought we were having a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of? CDAC. No? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Are there any voicemails?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, is there any discussion?
Yes, again, I'm on the CDAC committee. I'm so thankful for the work they do. It involves all the parts of the community, especially in our ward, in the certain housing areas. And involves certain members of our community to have a voice for those funds that come from the CBG funds. But we have several nonprofits that are doing so many great things in our community. From housing to first-time home buyers, to homelessness, to various other, to warming shelters, Boy Scouts, various other community programs to really benefit our community that go with housing. They also don't just provide housing, but they give job training and various other resources to help pull our people out of poverty and so they can be more sustainable. So I'm thankful for the work that our community leaders are doing, our community voices are doing, and also for the team of Melvin, the whole of CBG team that worked so hard putting all this together. Thank you.
First, I'd really like to thank council again for the opportunity to serve on this committee. And a plug, I'd like to continue serving on this committee. But the, one of the things that I'm really excited about with the go-around this year and the funds this year is how so much is being applied towards the opportunity for homeownership and how valuable that is when it comes to passing on generational wealth and establishing yourself and rooting yourself in a community and in a city. And so there are a number of different facets of these funds, the grant monies that come federally and how they're applied. But a large portion of that in this term and this go-around is going towards the value of first-time homeownership. And so that's very exciting. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Now, the only point I was gonna make was I didn't think anybody was seconding it or making a motion. And I was out of line because we weren't done with the hearing. So I really have no comment. I mean, I'm in support of it. I'll say that. How about that?
Okay, what's the mission?
I just want to thank Ms. Walker for your presentation. Appreciate the work you do.
There's no more discussion? Let's vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes 6-1. All right, the next section is public comments. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City council listens to your comments and may ask the city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions. To make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking, there is no applause, cheers, or jeers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote businesses, or campaign for office. Agenda item number five, hear from a citizen regarding Lynchburg City School Board and Lynchburg City Schools Health, Cynthia Via.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cynthia Via. I have been, I live 2028 Overbrook Road, over by the hospital. I have been a resident of Lynchburg City since 2001. I have been an educator for LCS and surrounding schools since 2002. And I have four kids, one who's graduated, and three who are currently in LCS schools. Here's my issue, okay? I started working at LCS in 2001. I know what it used to be like. I graduated from Amherst County High School, okay? You wanted to go to EC Glass High School. You wanted to be at LCS schools. That's where you wanted to be. That was the cream of the crop, okay? And now LCS schools is the, like, the worst. Nobody wants to be there. The kids don't want to be, the staff don't want to be there. It's not safe, okay? I have spoken to some of you previously about my experience with LCS, okay? And I have several teacher friends and staff who have confided in me, okay? And they have asked me to speak up for them because they do not feel that they're being heard. The schools are not safe. There's a few schools that are awesome, Deerington Elementary, I saw you there a couple weeks ago. Lincoln Middle School, amazing, okay? But the majority of them are not safe. And I'm not talking about building facilities. I'm talking about the support, the environment, the health of the school. And the school board that you currently have sitting does not care, okay? They're driving it into the ground. They're trying to make it so that the school is the worst in the state of Virginia, okay? It starts at the top. That is one thing I have learned in all my years. I have so many friends who've been principals of LCS school. I have friends who are principals in Campbell County Schools, Amherst, Bedford. Okay, I have a wide range, okay, of people that I know. And it all starts at the top. I know you're coming up and voting for redoing this school board, okay? Open spots, that kind of thing. I beg and plead of you, okay, to keep the schools in mind. You want to bring more people into Lynchburg City? You want us to continue to grow and thrive? Well, that's not gonna happen if LCS schools is a dumpster fire. And it literally is. It's an absolute dumpster fire. And I'm gonna end with this, okay? My daughter, who's going into her senior year, almost died, okay? She should not be here. She almost died July 25, 2025, sorry, 2024, sorry. And she wrote a letter, her experience from LCS this school year, and she has been on her recovery, okay? If I had more time, I would love to go into more depth about this, but this is her letter that she wrote. Dear Lynchburg City Schools, has made me feel as though I am not equal to the other students. I have been forgotten about, it's okay if I finish. I've been forgotten about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You've finished your letter.
I have been forgotten about, lied to, ignored, and mistreated throughout my entire 11th grade year. LCS has been horribly negligent to not leave myself and family, but also many other students and former students. Just because I am disabled mentally and physically now does not mean that I should be looked down upon and treated as though I am not a valued student, okay? There's so many others more just like her and teachers, but they gotta feel safe to speak up. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, hear from a group representative regarding Rainbow, Greg Berry, city elders. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, city council members. My name is Greg Berry, and I'm a resident of Ward Three. And tonight, I'm representing city elders. To God and His Son Jesus Christ be all the praise, honor, and glory. June is a month in which rainbow is utilized by some as a symbol for their purposes. But I believe it is necessary to put the rainbow in its proper context. The rainbow belongs to God. In Genesis 1, so God created man in His own image. In the image of God created He Him, male and female created He them. God blessed Him, and He said unto them, be fruitful and multiply. This is God's plan for all mankind. However, mankind fell from grace and rebelliously sinned against God. In Genesis 6, God said, I will destroy man whom I have created from the face of the earth. This is because they have fallen from grace. But Noah found grace in the eyes of the Lord, and God is a righteous God and will not tolerate sin. He is, however, also loving and merciful and provides a way of escape. God provided a way for mankind to survive. In Genesis, Chapter 7, 1, and God said unto Noah, come thou and all thy house into the ark. For thee have I seen righteousness before me in this generation. God set the rainbow as a symbol of His covenant that He would never again destroy the earth by flood. This is a continual reminder that God loves us. John 3, verses 16, 17. For God so loved the world that He gave His only-begotten Son, that whosoever believeth on Him should not perish but live or have everlasting life. For God sent not His Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through Him might be saved. 1 Peter 3, verse 18. For God also hath once suffered four sins, the just for the unjust, that He might bring us to good, being put to death in the flesh, but quickened by the Spirit. 2 Peter 3, 9. The Lord is not slack concerning this promise, as some men count slackness, but long suffering to usward, not willing that any should perish, but all should come to repentance. Philippians 2, 9 to 11. Wherefore God also hath highly exalted Him and given Him a name which is above every name, that at the name of Jesus Christ every knee shall bow, of things in heaven, and things in the earth, and things under the earth. And that every tongue should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father. Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father. So I want to encourage everyone, everywhere, whenever you see a rainbow in the sky or even a man-made one, take the opportunity to explain the true meaning behind it and tell others that God loves them and is offering them a way of salvation from the slavery of their sin. I also want to discuss one other issue relating to the school board. Last week, the school board was forced to deal with an issue relating to a citizen who refused to respect the rules concerning public comment and the time constraints. That citizen was subsequently banned from future school board meetings. While I appreciate the citizens' concerns and we all want our answers to our questions, this in no way permits citizens to violate the rules to suit their own wants. This exhibited a total lack of respect for school board members and their authority. Now the local NAACP wants to get involved. Why? For the sake of anarchy? I urge city council to fully support the school board's actions. If you do not take a firm statement or make a firm statement in support of the school board on this matter, you are inviting the same disorder and chaos into these very chambers. To do so is showing preferential treatment, and that should not be permitted. Do not let this get out of control. Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, hear from a group representative regarding GLTC Board of Director Feedback on 2026 Budget Planning, Tabitha Sprouse, GLTC. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Tabitha Sprouse, people call me Tab. I'm from Amherst County, but I have the privilege of serving as vice president for the GLTC Board. I'm here tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors. I really urge the council to read the submitted letter that was submitted on behalf of the board. I won't be able to cover all of the information and the severe impacts that we feel a 40% budget reduction will create for the community that GLTC serves. So on behalf of GLTC, we really, really want to express our deep concern regarding the 40% reduction. Our original budget proposal was a little under $10.7 million. We self-reduced, being a very conscious and steward board, to submit in March a two-point, a $10.2 million budget submission. The proposed cuts with the downfall that we'll see from not having the local funding through federal match and the state matching funding and the subsequent funding would leave us with a budget of seven points, like roughly $7.7 million for 2026. Public transit is not a luxury, it's a lifeline. Every day, GLTC connects thousands of residents to jobs, education, medical care, grocery stores, and essential community services. Many of our riders are individuals who cannot drive, they can't afford a car, and they rely on us to access life-sustaining treatment and basic needs. The magnitude of this cut would do several things. There'll be longer wait times for our folks, there'll be fewer routes, there'll be increased travel costs for vulnerable residents, and there'll be loss of access for entire neighborhoods. A typical rider would spend an average of $400 to $600 a month if they had to depend on alternate transportation if GLTC reduces its services. Our monthly ridership has almost improved back to pre-COVID times. We have about five, 56,700 riders monthly with an annual ridership of 624,527 souls, I like to call them. Reductions would also continue to negatively affect educational access. We serve CVCC. Workforce development, we serve areas like the Employment Commission, customer satisfaction because of wait, and then of course, staff satisfaction because of the dissatisfaction of our customers. I want to explain exactly what this is going to do. Number one, with this budget reduction, we have no choice but to join the city's health plan, which has been a proposal that we haven't got word back that we can join to have some cost savings due to rising health insurance costs. This would eliminate all Sunday services for GLTC. No buses on Sunday, no flex rides on Sunday, no paratransit on Sunday. We would also eliminate our 1B route, and we'd have to restructure our Route 1A. So we would lose direct service to the Jefferson and McGurk House, disruption of access to the Lynchburg Housing Authority, and there'd be no directional access to the transfer station. Combine, we'd also have to combine the Routes Nine and Five, which would increase travel time and reduce coverage. We would also have to reduce our workforce by four full-time operators, six part-time operators, two part-time paratransit operators, two maintenance and utility workers, and one part-time technician. These cuts, again, would impact the citizens of Lynchburg and the surrounding regions. With reduced staffing, we would also not be able to maintain bus shelters or take on new community partnerships that enhance ridership experience and safety. GLT has served the city of Lynchburg faithfully and responsibly. We ask city council to reconsider the proposed cut and protect the service that touches every corner of our community. Public transportation is an essential part of the infrastructure. It's not an expense. It is an investment in our economy, in our health, and in our future. At GLTC, we move our city 35 feet at a time, and we hope to remain a faithful partner impacting the city in a positive way. Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, hear from a citizen regarding school board candidates, Amanda Smithson. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Amanda Smithson. I'm a Lynchburg resident in Ward One. I'm the parent of two current Lynchburg City School kids. I volunteered with four LCS PTOs. For about 20 years, I've worked full-time for international child development nonprofit, Save the Children. I'm fortunate to be serving on the boards locally of the Lynchburg City Schools Ed Foundation, the Beacon of Hope, and Amazement Square. I'm also in my 40s, and I need to remember my reading glasses. Okay. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the open school board positions and specifically to ask you to seat April Watson to our school board. Through my kids and those PTOs, I've had the chance to spend real time in Lynchburg City Schools, as I know many of you have. Our school board needs members with real experience in child development and familiarity with the challenges many children face. April Watson has two decades' real experience as a social worker. She has real experience with foster care, adoption, and human services. Importantly, she understands the complex systems necessary to navigate to make our schools successful for all children and for Lynchburg families. She'd be the only licensed social worker on our school board. I know you've had many, many speakers over the years speak to you of the importance of Lynchburg City Schools. Is there anything more important to the future of Lynchburg than our schools? We need school board members who put children first. April Watson will help create a stronger system for all children and families. Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, hear from a citizen regarding Do the Math, Peter Sepharati. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Peter Sepharati, Ward One. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, whatever it is in your head. I'm not gonna talk about Do the Math, I tore that one up after I watched the work session this afternoon. I'd like to say that, you know, discussions about the budget and the real estate tax rate and other revenue items are really important. I'm hard, I'm hard-pressed to understand that there's a good reason that 20 days before the start of the new fiscal year, it hasn't been resolved yet, and at the last minute, looks like the taxpayers are gonna be ambushed with a huge tax increase, even more than we were looking at before. Our expectations were that we're gonna end up with a budget that was somewhere between existing budget and the proposed budget, which, that's what's called a compromise. I've heard that term thrown around in this room a couple times. So I don't understand where at the last minute we're being told, we're being told that our tax rates could go to a dollar, two and a half, but what really irritates me is that it's happening this late in the game. Where was this discussion two or three months ago? You should, people should, whoever, wherever this came from, you need to be up here talking to the people and making it, helping us understand why now? What is going on here? I can't think of a good reason for this to be happening right now. Maybe you know of one. I'd like to know what it is. I'd also like to say that Mr. Deemer made some comments about cutting spending during the work group, and he made the comment that it's a subject that really hasn't been discussed seriously in any of your meetings. And hasn't really been discussed seriously in public meetings. There's been some interesting suggestions for saving some money, being more efficient. I can tell you that last meeting, Mr. Fralde was asking for people, where would you cut? Where would you cut? I can guarantee you that if you put together a group of 11 citizens who are rational and know a little bit about finance and money, they could come up with some things. So really gotta get your act together. The people that walked out of that work session were just not walking out, and the other people that they don't agree with you are walking out, and people who voted for you, you're walking out on the citizens of Lynchburg, you're walking again out on your responsibilities as our representatives. It was shocking to see that, and I don't ever want to see that again. Thank you.
Agenda item number 10, hear from a group representative regarding Bridges to Progress, Gary Taylor, Citizens for a Better Lynchburg. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Man, I'm just curious. You've had the council map, did you guys have yours? I'd like to wait till the council members have theirs until I speak.
Mr. Taylor, your time is going.
Oh, sorry, ma'am. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and city council members. Wonderful city staff, Mr. City Attorney. My name's Gary Taylor, I reside in Goud, Virginia. And I'm here to talk about something. I'm gonna give you a reprieve from taxes and budgets, and if you have that in front of you, you can see what I did online, I scratched out anything with the word budgets, because we're gonna go in a different direction. I'm gonna speak tonight about the most important thing in the city of Lynchburg from the years 2013 to 2023, and that is bridges to progress, and it is totally gone. And what I'm hoping is the city will revive it and put it back. It's not that the city solves the poverty issue. The city is a partner with the community, and they were a great partner. This is the organizational chart that we had for Bridges to Progress, okay? Had a steering committee and 10 task force. So some of the people that were involved, Mary Jane Dole, Lindsay Cowood, Dr. Owen Caldwell, rest in peace, Ms. Sean Farmer, Ruth Talley, and Joan Foster. So this is a big deal. What they discovered in Lynchburg, I'm not taking any credit for it, was they founded this, which is a holistic way to address poverty, and it involves 10 pillars that address it in a holistic manner instead of a racial or a socioeconomic manner. Now, Dr. Wilder has been here the longest, and next to him, I've probably been involved the next most, and between the two of us, it's at least 25 years. Now, out of the next 14, excluding Mr. White and Ms. Witt, out of the next 12 out of 14 of you up here, we have more experience than all of you put together. And that, I'm not saying that in a negative way. I give Mr. Fralde a half, because he came in right before the pandemic. But the purpose is that we need to get this. The city, as Ms. Witt known, was able to allow a certain amount of money each year from city council, and it was $50,000 sometimes, and it was $25,000. So if you see the stuff that I've attached to it, that's the actual article about council earmarks $25,000 for poverty initiative. So what I'm taking the lead in and would like to do, the way I became involved with these folks is I'm a lifetime grocery guy. So any grocery store you go into now, I kinda helped found that back in the 70s and 80s. Well, one of the things we did was work on food deserts. And in 2018, that's when God asked me to get involved in Lynchburg specifically to solve the food desert issue or help them try to solve it, which at the time, they were wanting to build a food desert brick-and-mortar grocery store. So I'll say this once, and more if you need me to. Brick-and-mortar food desert stores are 0% chance of success. Zero. Maybe even negative. So in six months and $5,000 of my own money, with Dr. Brennan's approval, I shut down the food desert brick-and-mortar concept in Lynchburg, saving them $2 million in 18 months and $4 million if they'd have made it four years. Now, you guys are talking some big numbers. That's pretty big numbers for $5,000 of my own money in six months of time. So all we're asking is for somehow, whether council does it, I don't know what the procedure is, to allow Ms. Witt to be able to put back into the city budget $25,000 to $50,000 of discretionary money, and we have a plan, how it was used before, appoint new city liaisons, our former liaison, John Hughes is no longer with us, and community event members to various groups so we can get it started. So that's all I'm really asking tonight. I wanted to give you a little reprieve from the budget and the taxes, but it's all gone. We haven't talked about it in 10 years. I mean, five years. Thank you very much. Have a great night, and I hope we get that $50,000.
The next section is general business, includes new items for discussion. Agenda item number 11, consideration of adopting ordinance to set the real estate tax rate effective July 1, 2025.
Yes, may I? Mayor, I have a motion, and the motion is to amend the agenda and approve the following, that staff is directed to present a budget with the no car tax plan discussed at the city council work session to be presented at a, at a June 17 special meeting at 7:00 PM. That includes $1.4 million in cuts, and that the real estate item that is scheduled for today be removed from the agenda. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we get that motion repeated?
Sure. That the amended, can the amendment be amended? That the agenda be amended and the following be approved to direct city staff to present a budget with the no car tax plan as discussed at the city council work session at a special meeting on the 17th at 7:00 PM. That includes $1.4 million in cuts, and that the real estate item on this agenda be removed. And if I may speak to that motion?
Can I get a second?
I'll speak to you a second.
He has to speak to his motion first.
No, speak to your motion.
Oftentimes, Mayor, I, I don't like when we talk and then make a motion, so I'd like to make the motion first and then speak to it, but that's, that's why I didn't say anything. So, here's where we're at. There's been a lot said about this work session we had, and what's left out is that the math simply works. If you plug in your numbers, you can see that with the car tax set to $1.30 per $100 of assessed value, you'll see what your car tax is. With real estate set at $1.025, you'll see that there's a delta, and most people are getting a tax cut. That's impressive. That's impressive. In fairness, this did require the lodging tax to pass to make it work. But I think this is even better now because now it does incorporate in $1.4 million of a tax, of a cut of spending to the city hall. How'd I come up with that number? Admittedly, I just ran the math and added up how much the lodging was and how much the ambulance stuff was that somehow got to be on our agenda. That's, that's, that's the math. So $1.4 million. So now incorporates tax relief, it incorporates a tax cut, and it incorporates all the things I campaigned for, which is paying teachers more, saving the schools, firefighters, police officers get their step pay. I mean, those are things I strongly advocate for. So now incorporates all of that and we can do it ahead of the end of the fiscal year, which is our statutory deadline to approve a budget, the end of this month. It is my understanding, because this was raised at the work session, I know it's going to be talked about. From my understanding, section 58.1 through 3,330 of state code, Lynchburg is only required to mail a notice when assessments change. If the only change is that the tax rate is increased above what is printed on the assessment sheet, but the values haven't changed, then the 58.1-3330 doesn't require a second notice. Further, another code section, 58.1-3321 says when assessments cause a change in total levy excluding new construction, I believe it's greater than 1%. The locality must publish a notice of public hearings and allow public comment on the proposed tax rate before adoption. Even if assessments didn't change, a tax rate increase still mandates a publicly posted announcement of a hearing on the proposed new rate and opportunity for citizens to speak. What is not required is that another assessment notice to each property owner under section 58.1-3330 is required. Only a notice through the newspaper or legal ad and posted meeting ads. So we are still compliant in the law. With all that being said, this would mean the largest investment in public safety history. This would be the largest investment in Lynchburg city schools that the city has contributed to in years. This would mean a tax cut to the middle class. This would mean that we are not taxing lodging and we're actually incorporating in a spending cut on top of all of that. If you can't thread that needle any better, if you can thread that needle better, please tell me. But I'm telling you, this works, we should pass it. And the only thing I would ask staff is, is do we need the public hearing to be this coming Tuesday or the following?
From what I recall, for local levies to do an increase, it's seven days. So we need seven calendar days to be able to advertise the proposed increase on a tax increase.
How long does it take to get it lined up?
A day.
So let's do the 19th. I know y'all have the day off, but forgive me, we got to get a budget through. You comfortable with that? Because I'll make that as a change to my motion. All right. There you go.
So I'll speak for a second and agree with all that, that, and we also talked earlier about because of the timing of the implementation of all this, not only are we seeing tax relief by, by eliminating the car tax for those people who own cars that are valued at $20,000 or less, and then seeing significant decreases in cars that are valued more than that by dropping the rate down to $1.30. Because of the timeline, we'll also be able to bring back the credit on the trash fee and the DM registration fee for a year because of the overage that we paid for the first half of the year, which will also be nice. And now with the 1.4 million cuts, that is a benefit. So we're kind of hitting all of the targets that we've talked about. Does not make anybody up here a liar, we're delivering on promises. It's just in a different and non-conventional way. And every household, every household sees a benefit, renters and homeowners. And that's what we've talked about for the last two and a half years, is when you're putting all of the relief in just the homeowners, for just the homeowners, the renters did not see a benefit in the last tax cut that we did. So this allows property owners, personal property owners to see a benefit as well. And every household that has a car, which was what, 91% of the, was that right, Mr. Patrick, 91%? Of households, renters and owners have vehicles. So we're seeing across the board, everybody's, you know, seeing a, seeing relief by eliminating the tax, the car tax for cars that are $20,000 or less, which was the majority of households. So that is, that, and I believe that's making us the first locality that is doing that elimination at that level. So we are honoring what we've said, it's just a different way of doing it. We've, we have lowered the real estate tax 22 cents two and a half years ago. That has happened. This is a different way to deliver tax relief. And we are also honoring the area of delivering for the schools the way we haven't done before. And we are honoring some CIP projects that, you know, whether everybody agrees with it or not, there are people in the city who do believe in the pool project. There are people in the city who do believe in the library project. There are people who believe in the $60 million towards the schools. So we're listening to a wide variety of opinions, not a sliver of opinions, a wide variety of opinions when we're looking at the overall budget that we're, we're looking at. And I'm not saying a sliver of opinions, what I'm saying that it's, there's a sliver of people that are looking at the real estate tax. What I'm saying is there are a lot of people that care about the real estate tax that also care about the libraries. There are a lot of people that care about the real estate tax that also care about the schools. Okay? So, and there are a lot of people who care about getting tax relief on their personal property and on their, their vehicles. And this is a way to help a larger section of our citizens. So I think it is a very creative way to follow through on what we've said we were doing. Thank you.
There's one thing I need to correct in what I said, and Ms. Witt had just reminded me of this. There's an administrative, essentially a waiting period that the newspaper requires for us to be able to get this to them. So.
Mark, we're coming.
It's, it's, I think it's three or four days in advance of the initial publication date they require.
So if I may, forgive me. Friday. Would Friday next week be enough?
To submit it to them?
No, to have this meeting. Would that be enough lead time?
Typically, there's a Thursday at 3:00 PM deadline to put something in, a public hearing ad in the newspaper for the following Tuesday.
So my wife is watching at home and she's going to smile when I say this. When you say the following, does that mean the next week or the week after?
The next week. So if we, if we have it to the paper day after tomorrow on Thursday, by 3:00 PM, it could go in next Tuesday, which would be the 17th, I think. It would be in that newspaper and then you count seven days.
So what day does it need to be?
If it's in the 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd. So the earliest would be Monday, the 23rd.
Then there's another meeting on the 24th.
And that's it?
Yes.
I'm just going to clarify the motion and then turn it back over, I promise. Are you fine with the 23rd? Because that's the original, so we can do it.
So, hang on a sec. So if it's published on the 17th, is that right?
No, I want to publish it as soon as possible.
Get to the paper on Thursday, it'd be published on the 17th. Okay. Megan is telling me June 12th, if we get it in the paper, June 12th by 3:00 PM, we could, we could put it in June 14th's paper.
Yeah, if we can get it.
Oh, so that's better. Okay.
If we can get it in the paper on the 14th, then, then you could have it on the, the 23rd or 24th.
Or the, oh yeah, because we hit a weekend there.
So the 23rd. You comfortable with that? 23rd. Thank you.
Most of the mission?
Thank you, sir. I've got some, some questions. I don't know who from staff is going to answer them, but I got some questions about what's being proposed. So who's, who's volunteering? Okay. So, so I just want to be clear about what, one, what are we advertising here? Because what would the rate, the rate that's advertised be? Do we have that information?
It would be 102.5 on real estate.
So we're going to advertise a real estate rate of 1.025. Okay? And again, that's 907,000, is that right, per penny? So equalization is no net tax increase for our citizens. Is that correct?
I mean, it's more complicated than that, but roughly.
What's the code of Virginia say? Is it no net tax increase if we do it?
I don't have it memorized, but, but essentially it's the rate at which reassessed property does not generate any more revenue than, than that same property did the last period.
I mean, which, which is no net tax increase on the, the real estate excluding gross, correct?
Essentially, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So no net tax increase is a rate of 76.7. So when we go from, and that's right, what we advertised was 76.7 for the equalization rate, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the difference from 76.7 to 102.5?
25, 25.8.
25.8. And what is that 25.8 pennies equal in dollars on the real estate?
If we use a round 907,000?
Yes, sir.
It would be $23,400,600.
So that's a $23,400,600 increase, tax increase on real estate. Okay? All right. Now, what's the, what's the, what's the dollar value that we determined of the relief that this proposal would be? There was something that was, see, we never got this presentation in advance. This was kind of thrown on us by surprise. So I can't pull it up. But what, does somebody have the presentation available to say what the dollar value amount on the personal property tax relief was?
I believe it's 14 million.
Do you mean what PPTRA provides?
It was like, I feel like I remember 12.2 million or something like that.
14 million.
So, so, so this plan is 14 million less in personal property tax revenue? Okay. So 14 million. All right. So we're eliminating that 14 million in revenue, right? That's what's happening from personal property tax? But we're shifting it onto the real estate? Is that how this works? Is that what the 102.5 rate is? I mean, it's like over a million dollars in salary sitting right here. Somebody should be able to answer it.
Well, I believe that is what is proposed. I didn't do it.
Okay. So, so is that, is that, is that what, is 10,000? Is that the, is that the, so, so is that what we're doing? Is we're doing a 14 million move of the personal property tax onto the real estate tax? Is that what that is? Like, I'm, I'm trying to understand this and making sure that we understand what is proposed, what the motion is. So, so is that, so what happens to that 14 million revenue? Where's it go?
My understanding is it would be made up by real estate.
So it would be made up by real estate. So in the 102, okay, so 102.5 is a $23,400,600 real estate tax increase above equalization. But then we're going to move 14 million over to real estate, right? So what we end up with is a $9,400,600 left that's still in the tax increase. So what I'm trying to figure out is, we were told that there's a tax cut with this just a moment ago, but I don't see a tax cut when there's an increase, a net increase of 9.5 million dollars. Right? That's, that's the point here is there's no tax cut. It's, it's just a gimmick to shift who pays. So if you own real estate, you pay more, right?
Most residents that own real estate will end up paying less overall.
So I've already sent the numbers from this proposal based on the real estate rate, okay, to a landlord in Ward 4, not who Mr. Fralde insinuated it was earlier, okay? He's got 225 units in Ward 4 and he's already quoted a $50 a month rent increase. Period. So this proposal is going to cost people in an apartment complex in Ward 4 $600 a year in increased rent because of the increase to the real estate tax. Because he's not going to absorb it, he's going to pass it across to his renters. And you know what he said? He said to me, I'll read it. "Wow, I hope not, but to answer your question, probably $50 a month per unit. Based on the market, I believe the rents are at max now. It's getting to the point where it's unsustainable for a lot of people that are renting." Okay? That was his, that was his exact response to what the proposed real estate rate at 102.5 will do to that large complex. Okay? Now, I do have questions also for the city attorney about the, the notices being mailed. What's your, Mr. Fralde is, is trying to say that we don't need to mail any new notices out.
So I need to review those statutes that he had cited before I can speak to that. So I'm happy to, to answer that to the best of my ability at a different time, but I can't do it publicly. Initially, when I was aware of, of how we were approaching this, it was going to be through the process of adopting a budget and then doing a tax increase after, excuse me, the tax rate increase, but the cut of the personal property tax. I guess, one, to ensure that we were going to have an adopted budget before July 1, but all of it would have been taken care of as part of the same process. So I, I can't speak to those statutes on the fly.
Now, one of the things that I, that I also have a question about is, so is this like a new proposed budget? Is that what this is? And this is like revision two, FY 2026 revision two? It's vastly different from what was?
No, this is council making adjustments to the proposed budget.
So there's no budget public hearing requirement for, for something that's a magnitude change, increase of this much?
So I don't think so because the revenue, from what I understand, the revenues and expenditures in and of themselves are not changing. It's just the rates that are changing. So there wouldn't be any budget changes. It's only the rates that are being adjusted.
So, all right, so, so, man, this is rotten. It's a $9.4 million tax increase, right? And, you know, they send out these notices, these reassessment notices, when they propose these rates and they propose this budget in the beginning of the year, and it tells you, this is what your last assessment was, this is what your current assessment is, and this is what your reassessment is. And then it has the tax rate and it tells you what the total taxes you pay on it. Now, thanks to Delegate Wendell Walker and the, I think Transparency in Taxation Act, I think is what it was called, or Tax Transparency Act, there's a new column on there that then there's a new column on there that then shows you what would be your real estate tax payment, your real estate tax bill, if the equalization rate, which is, in this case, is seventy-six point seven, right, was to be adopted. And it shows you what taxes you would pay with that. So the assessment notices that we mailed out show the previous rate and the previous assessment from, you know, prior twenty twenty-three. And then it shows what you pay now. It shows what you would pay if we kept it at the proposed eighty-nine cents, which was originally eleven point two million dollar real estate tax increase, the largest one that I've been able to find in Lynchburg history was proposed. And then it showed you what your tax payment would be at eighty-nine cents. Now our citizens and our property owners aren't getting anything in the mail that shows them what their tax is paid at a dollar oh two point five would be. And that's pretty substantial. There's a big difference between eighty-nine cents and one oh two point five. And, you know, I think it's pretty rotten on our citizens to do something like this at the last minute with zero transparency. Complete, you know, like, we're not, there's no tax relief here. What we're doing is we're moving it from one place to the other place. You know, maybe there might be going from eleven point two to nine point four, there might be, you know, one point eight million. Right? But it's not really one point eight million. Because what we're talking about is every penny of that nine point four million is an increase. Equalization is no increase. Every which way around this, we're raising taxes on our citizens. We're raising taxes on the individuals and families and businesses of this community, every which way around it. When we're bringing, the revenue is the taxes. You are the revenue, right? You are the revenue. So the problem that we have here is there's this protection on the expenditures that is unbelievable, like it can't be touched. Let me tell you something. Did everybody see the wonderful article in WSLS about the pool that Rona just opened? It's beautiful, brand new pool, three point two million dollars. Do you know how much the Miller Park Pool renovations are in the CIP? It's like eleven million bucks? Get out of here. Right? Like, get out of here. So, I mean, that's, that's just, there is something that we can do. Right? There are expenses that we don't need to add. Because every expenditure above what we had last year is additional expenditures. Right? My opinion, if we got to raise the taxes nine point four million dollars on our citizens, it's not the time to do a staff salary increase. Now, I'm standing behind the public safety increases that we need to do. Right? We got to do the pay progression plan for public safety. And if we can get the match for schools without a tax increase, which I believe we can, to get the salary increases for our frontline educators, I support that too. Right? But not on the backs of our citizens with a tax increase. Now is not the time to increase taxes. It's clear. This is going to drive rents up. It's going to drive up how much you pay in your real estate taxes. It's going to drive up mortgage payments. It's going to drive up a lot of things. Right? And you know what? I don't know, you know, what everybody's situation is up here. Okay? But I know that I pay real estate taxes on the home that I live in. And I know that I pay personal property tax on the vehicles in my driveway. Okay? So I've looked at the effects on this, and you know what? It actually is not positive for me. Personally, I will be paying more with this, and I know many other folks will. If you want to drive an expensive car, that's a choice. That's a luxury. Right? And you pay more in personal property tax when you make that choice and you make that luxury. People can't trade in their house that easy when the taxes make it less affordable. You can't just go down the street to the House Commander and trade it in. Right? You can't do that. But with your car, you can. So this is just absolutely, I am blown away. The voters fired the tax and spend Democrats just to replace them with tax and spend rhinos? Is that what it is? Just call it what it is, right? This is, this is absurd. A nine point four million dollar tax increase? The Democrats never did a nine point four million dollar tax increase that I've been able to find. Nine point four million dollar tax increase on our citizens. The Democrats never did it.
Marty, you give somebody this chance to speak.
I've still got the floor, Mr. Mayor. Nine point four million dollar tax increase on our citizens. Nine point four million. The Democrats, the tax and spend Democrats never did it. The tax and spend rhinos are trying to do it.
Yeah, wait a minute. Mr. Feraldi?
LynchburgCarTax.com. If you want to see how this impacts you, go there right now, punch in your numbers, and you'll know exactly that. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and two cars at fifteen thousand dollars is a one hundred and forty-seven dollar tax cut in the city.
Doesn't factor in individual assessments.
Five point four three percent tax cut. Period.
It's not a tax cut.
Mayor?
Marty?
It's not a tax cut. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, a nine point four million dollar increase is not a tax cut. We need to be honest to our citizens, Mr. Mayor, and this is not honest.
He has the floor. Mr. Feraldi?
And better yet, I will make the HTML code that makes this calculator possible publicly accessible so you all can see the numbers inside the calculator if you really want it. It's all going to be public. And you'll see if it works for you. If it doesn't, tell me. Tell us. But here's the end of the day, guys. We saw at the four o'clock work session who this impacts, and there was actual tax cut. Math is very simple. And Mayor, we need to control this room. Because ultimately, this is just a bait and switch, as it was. This is just a distraction. If you don't like it, vote against it, but I would like to humbly submit to you it is a tax cut. If you punch in the numbers, you'll see exactly what it is. For myself, for the record, it is a thirty-seven dollar tax cut. Which means if we went to equalization, I'm paying thirty-seven dollars more. And by the way, if we do equalize the real estate rate, everyone is paying more still. That is still a tax increase. That was just discussed at the work session at four o'clock. Also, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Lynchburg City Manager asked me what I wanted my legacy to be for my term on council in my first meetings. My answer was not a building or memorial or something with my name on it. I said I want Lynchburg residents to stop paying the awful car tax. Marty Missions, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, Councilman Marty Missions, the car tax needs to go. Will Democrats let it happen? January twenty-eighth, I fully support getting rid of this outrageous tax. Sharing Governor Youngkin's post on Facebook about getting rid of the car tax. So this does it. This means that even if you drive a more expensive vehicle, which is a choice, you're getting a further tax cut because of the fact that we're going to be charging at a lower rate. It is simply the math. If you disagree with it, vote against it. But Mayor, I'm not going to allow this to be spun. If you want the code for the calculator, ask for it. Foy it, because I would argue it is foyable. Secondly, if you want to use the calculator, punch in your numbers and you'll see if it works for you. And it will. If it doesn't, email us and tell us. But I guarantee you the overwhelming majority of the folks I ran to support here want to see less taxes, period. They don't want to just say, well, if you own your house, you get the break. We can point out Ward Four all we want. I've got all these developments coming into town. There's been this argument that says, well, maybe that means developers won't be coming in anymore. I've got multiple neighborhoods where we'll say, praise God. Richland Hills would be so happy. We don't need to keep going down this. I had to clarify for the record, that's what this does. This reduces taxes overall for more people. Forty-five thousand, five hundred vehicles will now get a tax cut. Forty-five thousand vehicles in this city. All while doing all the things that this budget calls for. And on top of that, a million point four in cuts in spending. It does it. The math maths. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the patterns that I've seen in the budget discussions as a whole is how we're allowing spending to drive our policy decisions rather than policy decisions to drive our spending decisions in the budget. And we flip the cart before the horse, and it's creating a lot of chaos. It is traditional to set the rates in advance, and you do that just as a family does it, so that you know the revenue that's coming in, and then you take that revenue and you decide based on your priorities how you allocate it. Ms. Reed brought up some key components in the capital improvement plan. I recognize that that is different than the operating, but I'm going to focus on that, and then I'm going to shift back to some of the key points with the operating that we need to address with the current plan on the table. So first, we've discussed the sixty million when it comes to the schools a great deal. I have not heard one council member in opposition to the school portion of the capital improvement projects in the budget. That's essential. It's necessary. We have to move forward in dealing with that deferred maintenance in our school buildings. Absolutely essential. We've had discussions about the pool in the library. And with the pool in the library, one of the key things, and I've spoken about the pool quite a bit, but there are a couple areas that I want to highlight. One is the possibility, again, of public-private partnerships in how to carry forward costs and services in our city in a way that expands access and decreases tax burden. That is a possibility, and those discussions are happening, and there's value that can be brought to the table with that. In addition, what was presented to us, and I had the privilege of talking to Mr. White about this, and he provided some background, but with what was presented to us by city staff in the memo, it discounted a number of options with the pool. And so I did speak with a vendor, one of the primary vendors in the region, about some of the possibilities of what could take place with the pool. And it was very different than what was originally presented. In addition to that, Mr. White also explained kind of the background of how some of those decisions are made when it comes to the capital improvement plan or a project in the budget. And with the pool specifically, what took place is you have an architect, sorry, engineer. You have an engineer that comes and does this assessment of essentially your wish list as well as the public input. And you take that wish list and you put together the design based on that wish list. If you're building a house, you don't get to go to each individual vendor and tell them, build whatever you want according to this wish list. You have to weigh those different components against each other. When it came to my wedding, it was either the live band or the photographer. And I'm sorry, Kurt, the photographer lost out. We had the live band, and it was a blast. It was incredible. People still talk about it. Not ten years later. Where are we, seven, eight? So you have to weigh these different components of a budget against each other rather than just go for the wish list on everything and then put it all on the deck and not assess how that's impacting the residents as a whole. When it comes to this specific proposal, again, spending driving policy. Mr. Feraldi has brought a number of elements to the table, but each of them has protected the increase in spending, the trajectory of continuing an increase rather than limiting spending growth. And that's significant. That's significant when it comes to how we assess our role as government. Continuing with that, and Mr. Missions brings up a very important point. This is not a tax cut. If you want to do a tax cut, Mr. Feraldi, and if you want to have tax relief, my suggestion would be that we start with equalization. And if you want to shift the personal property tax, start with that equalization point and actually see a decrease in city spending on, down to that equalization rate. If you want to protect the renters, and that's your goal with the shift, then take that approach, where there's still an increase in the proposed budget, which would still be, or, sorry, there's still a decrease in the proposed budget, but it's still an increase from the previous fiscal year. I'm going to recap that one more time, because the first couple times I went through it, I got confused. So when we talk about equalization, I'm going to start in my recap from my, how I've described this before. When we talk about equalization, there's still an increase in revenue to the city from the previous fiscal year. It is simply a decrease in the proposed revenue increase. So if I hire somebody and they ask for a hundred dollar increase in their monthly wage, and I say, well, I'm going to give you a fifty dollar increase, and they just complain about the fifty dollar cut. No, they had a fifty dollar increase, but they're complaining about a fifty dollar reduction in their requested increase. That's what we have currently with equalization. With this personal property tax plan, it keeps the full proposed amount except for the one point four with, it was going to be shifted into lodging. So it keeps that full amount, but shifts it into the real estate revenue and decreases it in the personal property tax. So government spending still increases significantly. What this does is it shifts the tax burden. But it doesn't just stay in one place. It will always trickle down, because what happens in real estate is going to impact renters. It impacts renters and owners alike. And so it just shifts it to another portion of the budget that's honestly more difficult to get relief from the state than in the personal property tax area. So there'd be this major shift that's taking place and still increases government spending. If Mr. Feraldi is serious about tax relief, my suggestion would be if he wants to shift the personal property tax rate into the real estate rate, that we begin with that equalization threshold rather than assume the sixteen percent inflationary increase. And then that would be a shift if you're serious about tax relief. So that would be my counterproposal if this is a serious proposal. But I am in favor of equalization. I believe we need to protect property values. I believe we need to protect stability in the housing market. And we need to protect that for homeowners and renters alike in order to keep affordable housing in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
I would like to make a substitute motion that we set the tax rate at equalization rate of seventy-six point, or seven, give me, give me straight here. Seventy-six point seven six. And that would be my substitute motion.
I'll speak to you a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been working in government a long time, and I've seen a lot of things, but I can honestly say I've never seen anything like this. This is last minute. This is, we're not even sure what the codes are that are applied. And the city attorney told us we can't find that out, but we're going to vote on something. It's all, it's all happy. That's what I keep hearing. It's, it's happy homeowners. I've heard that. I heard we're going to get happy trash fees reduced. Happy property tax increases. I don't know how that's happy. Happy Richland Hills is going to be happy. The middle class is going to be happy. The, there's going to be happy relief for all, happy tax cuts, happy schools, happy firefighters, happy public safety. If anybody's ever been to Vegas, you know the, you know the cup game. You know, and this is a last minute thing, and there's all these cups, and we move it all around. Everything's, everything's, you know, and then, and then we pick it up and it says, you're going to be happy. Okay, you know, I got news for you. This is, this is a sneaky tax increase. That's what this is. Bottom line. And it's not going to make anybody happy but government. Because this is on an asset going to a dollar point oh two five that increases in value. It appreciates. We all know it. We've seen our assessments go up. So down the road, guess what? Guaranteed. Government's going to get rich. Vegas is going to win. The House always wins. Okay? And that's exactly what this is. Gimmick. 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 The only one that gets rich on this is City Hall. And we, we, you can't do government this way. Last minute, oh, we're throwing this new thing in here. We finally got folks understanding that the assessment and the tax rate are really, and it's a sneaky tax increase when the assessments go up, and all of a sudden you're paying more money, and government always tells us, oh, no, it's not a tax increase. And I'm stroking a bigger check. What do you mean it's not a tax increase? We finally got people understanding that complex two-number equation, assessments, rate. And now we're doing. rate, and now we're doing car tax rate, real estate rate, I mean, all this stuff going on, and, and the shell game is moving real fast, guys. Pay attention, pay attention, because in the end, all this happy promises, I've seen it in government my whole life, they promise you happy, and in the end, you're stroking a bigger check. Okay? To the government and City Hall is the only one who's happy. So I hope my colleagues will go down this incredibly bad plan, incredibly last minute, so many variables here, I can't even keep track of them all, no way you can promise anything. Government editorial candidates are promising car tax relief? Are we going to lose that if we cut our own car tax and then we won't get the money from Richmond? I mean, there's so many variables here, we've got to make a good decision, and we need to make it soon. I've tried to pass or encourage and do what I just did with a, with a, you know, the rate. This, the rate needs to be set. I've tried, I think I've lost count, five, six times to set this rate. Here we are. I mean, we're running out of time, I think that's part of the strategy on this gimmick. It's a sneaky tax increase, it's a sneaky tax increase, it's a gimmick, and I hope we will just equalize and then build a budget based on reality that cares about our children, cares about our families, cares about our community, and puts some meaning to that logo that says Lynchburg loves you. Because I can guarantee you, when you get through all this stuff, you ain't going to be happy, and you ain't going to feel loved.
Is there any more discussion?
Second. Mr. Mayor, have a second.
No, Mr. Timmer.
I'll wait for my comments.
Mr. Feraldi.
I'm voting no.
Mr. Timmer.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mar.
Equalizing the tax rate is the right thing to do. It's simple. It prevents a tax increase. That's what I said. Absolutely, I told, I told our city manager that I wanted my legacy to be getting rid of the car tax. That didn't mean moving it, because we're not getting rid of it. All we're doing is putting it somewhere else. Right? So, you know, when you got something you need to get rid of, do you just throw it in the closet and ignore that it's there? No, you take it out and you get rid of it. What we need to do is we need to get rid of these tax and spend policies. That's what we need to do. It's never been good for Lynchburg. Right? We heard somebody talk today about how wonderful EC glass was back in 2001. Okay? I moved here in ninety-six. People were fighting to get into the EC glass high school district. Right? And guess what happened? Guess what happened? Tax and spend Democrats took over Lynchburg City Council after Mayor Whitaker, and they ran it into the ground. You know, we've got this horrible traffic problem, 501-221, horrible traffic problem, 501-221, and that thing's ballooned to close to ninety million dollars if it hasn't gone over yet, what it's going to cost to fix that with the one-way pairs. You know, at one point in time, we actually had the money, we were supposed to fix that? But then they turned it into a beautiful new entrance with the bridge over the dam to the University of Lynchburg. So that happened, that money was shifted, 501-221 got delayed. I mean, the, these are the things we need to stop. This is one of the things that I felt was great that I saw from some of the hoteliers. What do people love about Lynchburg, when they compete to bring conferences and events here? You know what the advantage is? It's not our name, it's not our attractions, it's not our co-location to an interstate, I can tell you that. It's affordability. People come here and they bring events and attractions here because of affordability. That's it. That's it. This kind of increase on real estate, it is going to impact your real estate values. Earlier, Mr. Feraldi tried to say that my assessment of my own house wasn't accurate because the county reassesses every four years and the city reassesses every two. Well, you can account for that, and I did. And I did. Right? I watched as Campbell County equalized a house just like mine across the county line, less than a half mile away. At one point, there was over a hundred thousand dollar disparity in the values between my house and the house in Campbell County. All right? And that's because it was more expensive to own it when they kept raising taxes over and over. The market determines how much you will pay. If somebody's only going to pay three hundred thousand dollars for that house, they're only going to pay three hundred thousand for that house whether it's got an eighty-nine cent tax rate, a seventy-six point seven tax rate, or a one oh two point five tax rate. Right? And it's also going to affect people's ability to borrow, because they're going to have to factor in those taxes. It's going to lower what somebody can borrow, because they're going to factor in the amount of the taxes into that. Right? There's a lot of information that I've found just sitting here. American Enterprise Institute, one percent tax rate increase reduces home values by point seven to one point two percent. Right? These are the questions I asked, the staff couldn't really provide answers for, they said everything was going to be fine. A two to three percent, excuse me, the home equity, right, for the Federal Reserve, a two to three, four point, a two to three point four percent value drop directly reduces inheritance and financial security. All right? So for those folks that we have in poverty, the twenty percent in our population that are in poverty, that own a home and have some equity in that home, and we start chipping away at that because we mess up the values of those homes by increasing the tax rate? Not good. Not good. You know, um, there's going to be an impact to the renters. And rent's way too high right now. I think that's something everybody can agree on. Rent is way too high. Right? Is that the solution? Drive up rent by six hundred dollars a year to save two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year on a car tax? Is that the solution? Really? Especially when we've got candidates on both sides of the aisle right now talking about eliminating this thing? Going back to what is one of the things that's great about Lynchburg and the affordability, that's something that, that the hoteliers said that makes them attract business here and attract events here. They actually spoke specifically to the, was it Disc Golf, I think? I don't do it, so I don't know. Wasn't really much of a frisbee thrower, but the Disc Golf World Championship that came here, affordability in the region was one of the big impacts that had them come here. You know what? Who's going to be absorbing these rates? The hotels, they own real estate, all of these, the prices are going to go up. You better believe it. They're going to try to push them up. And, you know, now's not the time. This is a wildly volatile move in tax policy that we've got no answers on what this kind of massive increase is going to do to the real estate market. Mark my words, if this goes through, we're going to Detroit, Lynchburg, Virginia. If this goes through, we are going to Detroit, Lynchburg, Virginia. Right? It's going to happen. This is a wild, volatile increase to the real estate tax rate. People can't handle it. Equalization's the way to go. I'll be supporting the motion.
Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been openly in support of equalization throughout the duration, the budget discussion. And one of the main reasons that I am in support of equalization is because one of my missions on council has to do with Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One of my primary missions on council has to do with housing in this community. It's not what I ran on, it's something I've discovered in the past six months. Skyrocketing the real estate rate with housing creates housing instability for owners and renters alike. And we can talk about shifting the personal property tax, and you get a cut here and you get an increase there, and, and play those games, but the way it ultimately impacts the market is it drives housing towards a lack of affordability. I'll come back to that point in a minute. In middle school, I had a cellphone for security reasons, and I had one of those wonderful old flip phones, and it had a camera on it, and the camera was very pixelated. I, I'm aware of the time. Thank you for hanging in there with us, this is an important discussion. When my mom took me to the, I think it was, it wasn't Verizon at the time, whatever the company was, to get a new phone, we had a discussion, and we were looking at another phone that did not have a camera on it. And I turned to her and I said, "Mom, you can't downgrade me. You can't downgrade me from a phone that previously had a camera to a phone that no longer has a camera." And what I have learned is that that was very middle school thinking. It is not a sustainable way of approaching life, it's not a sustainable way of approaching budgets, it's not always about the upgrade. We have to adjust to economic realities, and right now, it is a very turbulent, it's a turbulent economy. There is a world, there is a global economic reset, there is a cold financial war with China, these are just realities that we are now dealing with, and family budgets are thin. And for government to assume that we can capitalize off the inflationary increases and then shift it around and call it relief is, is tragic, honestly. The impact to affordable housing, it truly concerns me, it truly concerns me, and there are areas in the budget that we can adjust if we're willing to have those discussions. I have heard three different times tonight, references in different ways of creating an increase and then calling a pocket of it relief. That doesn't work, it doesn't work for business, it doesn't work for the individual family. I am definitively in support of equalization, I have been from the beginning and I was in my campaign, and I am in support of that because I believe it is what is best for the citizens of Lynchburg, and that is what I have overwhelmingly heard from those citizens. And as we look at the business community, as we look at the tax principles in general, we heard from the hoteliers how taxes would impact their ability to do business, the increase in taxes would impact their ability to do business, shifting this burden to the business community, to the homeowners, it ultimately impacts the entire economy of Lynchburg. You can't look at these numbers in isolation. It doesn't work that way. So if we're going to talk about all these shifts and then call it relief, that's not how it will impact the economy as a whole. I am, again, definitively in support of equalization. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let us vote.
Initiating vote on the substitute motion for equalization now.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend Mr. Feraldi's.
Point of order, there probably be one substitute motion and a motion.
I'm not, I'm making a motion to amend, Mr. Feraldi, I'm not making a motion, a substitute motion.
I'll let you finish.
No, but, but you didn't even hear what I said, I'm going to make my motion to amend, and then you can do your point of order.
You can't amend a motion, but twice, or it can be substituted once. You can't do either.
Read the rules of procedure, I got them right in front of me.
Then read them yourself.
I did. And
Let's go to recess, five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to retain the floor when we come back from recess. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to retain the floor when we come back from recess.
Call the order. Marty?
I'm going to make a motion to amend, point of order. You can't motion amend a motion that has had a substitute motion on it in our rules of procedure.
Can you reference where that's at?
Mr. Attorney?
Sure. So under the city council's rules of procedure, it's number eight, I think under section six, seven, substitute motion. It says, "If the substitute motion fails, the former motion can then be voted upon." So, as I construe this, as I interpret it, you know, the intent is for efficiency of matters.
If you also read on the motion to amend and a motion to substitute, a motion to substitute can be made only once, a motion to amend can be made only twice, but you cannot do that after it has had a substitute.
It doesn't say that.
Yes, it does.
Read it.
Motion to amend.
Read it.
I don't have to justify it, you read it.
If you're going to say it in front of the public, read the rule, I'll read the rule.
Why do you have to be such a jerk?
Because you just...
Pump the brakes, bud.
Because I don't want to do a cash grab on the citizens, that's why.
Well, hang on, what's...
Any substantive motion to amend, number seven, to amend, any substantive motion properly on the floor may be amended. An amendment to a motion must be pertinent to the subject matter of the motion. I haven't even made the amendment yet, so how do you even know if it's pertinent? He's ruling on it, because again, Feraldi just wants to shut me up, right? He said it loud and clear, he wants to shut me up, he says it all the time. An amendment is improper if adoption of the motion with that amendment added would have the same effect as rejection of the original motion. Again, I haven't read the motion. A proposal to substitute completely different wording for a motion or an amendment shall be treated as a substitute motion. So, I'm not making something completely different, we haven't even heard it yet. Motion may be amended no more than twice, once a motion has been offered to the council, it's up to the council to decide whether or not it should be changed by amendment. It is not necessary for the person making the original motion to approve of any proposed amendment to the motion. So, that doesn't say you can't make an amended motion if you made a substitute motion. Now furthermore, number eight, substitute motion, a substitute motion shall be allowed to replace any motion properly on the floor. That's what we just did. It shall have precedence over an existing motion and may be discussed prior to being voted on. If the substitute motion fails, the former motion can then be voted on. If the substitute motion passes, the substitute motion replaces the main motion, and the new main motion will be considered enacted by the council. No more than one substitute motion may be made. If a substitute motion passes and replaces the main motion, no further substitute motions may be made. So these are two different things, these are the procedural motions available. One is to amend, one is a substitute. It says, "A proposal to substitute completely different wording shall be treated as a substitute motion." I'm not going to propose completely different wording. Therefore, it's not going to be treated as a substitute motion. So Chris Feraldi, cash grab Chris over here, right, is proposing something, or trying to, to the point of order, on something that I haven't even said yet. So there's no way to rule on this, Mr. Mayor, until I actually propose my amendment, so I'd like to propose my amendment and not be silenced by Chris Feraldi again.
What is your amendment?
The amended motion that I'm making, and if you can just restate that motion, Chris, so I make sure I don't get this wrong?
No.
Can we restate the motion, Ms. Finney?
The original motion was to amend the agenda to direct staff to present an agenda based on, oh gosh, I can't read my handwriting, based on, I guess, the car plan or the tax plan?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Amend the agenda and add, add and approve the following, to direct staff to produce a budget with the no car tax plan on, I believe it was the 23rd?
That's correct.
With $1.4 million in spending cuts, and that the real estate item on this agenda be removed. That was my motion. And if the mayor would like to have a vote on that, he doesn't have to recognize Mr. Missions who has spoken far more than I have tonight.
All right, so my amended motion is going to be to change the 1.4 million to 11.2 million in spending cuts. And in addition to that, it's going to be to send out the proper reassessment notices and notify our citizens. So same motion, going to change the 1.4 to 11.2, and at the end, send out the reassessment notices to notify our citizens. That would be no net tax increase. So voting for my amendment means you're voting to make sure there's no increase in taxation on our citizens. Voting against my amendment would mean you're voting for a tax increase. So that's my amendment.
So, Mayor, before the make a decision on the motion that's been made, I guess what I would read to you is this from our rules of procedure. It says, "An amendment is improper if adoption of the motion with that amendment added would have the same effect as rejection of the original motion." So, it's really, it's really up to you, Mayor, if you think the substance of what has been proposed is a rejection of Councilman Feraldi's main motion or original motion.
I think it's a rejection of what Mr. Feraldi has already suggested.
Appeal.
I'd like to appeal the ruling of the chair.
Appeal the ruling of the chair.
Councilman Missions has the right to call for an appeal, so once there's an appeal, there is essentially a vote of council taken to determine whether your decision should be overturned and the amendment should be permitted.
Changed the number and added five words.
And, Mayor, if you are supposed to do that by hand vote, so if you support standing with you...
No, let's do an electronic vote, that's what, that's what the rules of procedure say, we're supposed to use electronic votes, let's do the electronic votes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to the...
You can't vote on appeal, you have, there's no discussion on appeal.
That's right.
No discussion.
I'll initiate the vote on appeal.
So it's, let's clarify, let's clarify for the group what yes means and no.
So do I, so I need to speak to my appeal and say what my appeal is, is that appropriate?
No, you don't speak on appeals.
You've called the appeal, so it's, it's yes to overturn the mayor's decision, or no to agree with the mayor's position.
No supports the mayor.
No, we agree with the mayor. Yes.
All right, initiating vote now. I guess technically this will pass because the noes have it?
Yes, so the appeal has been rejected. Mayor?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a second amendment, we have a right to a second amendment on the motion, and I'd like to make an amendment that we send out the notices in combination with Mr. Feraldi's, with Mr. Feraldi's plan, is just to amend that motion to send out the notices so that we properly notify our citizens of this outrageous tax increase. It is inappropriate, it is unethical, it is contrary to transparency, it is, it is just, it is, it is like, it would make the Lynchburg City Council the bottom feeders of all politicians to not notify our citizens via mail of this extraordinary outrageous tax increase. Extraordinary and outrageous, we should notify them by the mail, so I'm making a motion to amend Mr. Feraldi's motion as is, just adding that we send the same notice we send when we do a reassessment so that our citizens know what they're getting hit with. It is completely and totally appropriate that we do that. I make that as a motion to amend.
Second. He's been, he's calling your name this whole time.
Chris.
We don't need to talk, we can just vote, because we all know how this is going to go. That's my position. Let's just vote. I'm voting no on the substitute, or the motion to amend, or whatever it is.
Okay, let's deal with the motion on the floor. Jack, I mean, Ms. Timmer.
I made, I made a motion, Mr....
You made a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We need to notify our citizens about what's going down. It's that simple. And, and newspaper, Facebook, that's not enough, they need a letter in the mail.
Second, I'll speak to my second.
Go on, speak to your second.
I think you're probably right, we can all see which way this is going, but let's be clear, this is, this is an incredible tax increase, but worse than that, this is a backdoor, sneaky tax increase. Everybody out there's got a letter with a rate and an amount on it. And then they're, they're going to pay more, a different amount, based on 34% increase? Okay, if one of your companies that you pay, you know, a regular bill too, once a year, changes their rate, and 34% increase, and they already told you that the bill coming is going to be $150, and you get the bill and it's gone up 34%, what would you do? But what's worse about this is, we're not even going to send that notice. I mean, this, this is so wrong on so many levels, I know it's probably not going our way, Mr. Mayor, but you said you're here for the citizens, and here's your opportunity to at least make sure they know what's about to hit them, you know? That's only fair. There are a lot of families out there, and then with this real estate tax rate, they're going to, they're going to put the sign up in their yard, and they're going to leave But to do it without even notifying them, I mean, that just adds insult to injury.
Okay, Jack?
Were you finished, Mr. Timmer? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a notice is appropriate, but I'm actually interested in another motion, and I'm still navigating some of the rules of procedure, and so I don't know if this would be a friendly amendment, or how this would work, but I am interested in a motion to divide. Because there are a number of components of the original motion, and we have the right to do that as we defer to Robert's Rules of Order. And so dividing the motion into its individual parts of increases and decreases and its various components would create clarity for staff direction, as well as for the vote, because there are so many aspects to it. And so, I don't know how that works with the two amendment rule, but that would be what I would propose bringing to the table as an alternate, so.
May I ask? Mayor? So, there's a couple of things going on here, Mayor. So one, there's been a proposed idea of divide, doing a divide of the question that's there. So in our rules of procedure, it says, "In addition to substantive proposals, which is motion to consider to adopt, only the following procedural motions and no others are in order. Unless otherwise noted, each motion requires the floor and a second, is debatable, may be amended, and so forth. If a procedural option is not listed below, then it is not available." So, that motion is not a procedural motion as part of the rules of procedure. Certainly, city council could suspend its rules if as a majority had wanted to do something like that, or moving forward, if we want to look at that as part of the rules of procedure in July, if we were to do that as amendment, but as of now, you have the ability to choose to rule it out of order. That's the first issue, that's the motion to divide. The second issue is the motion to amend. So just for, for purposes of my clarification, even if there's no legal requirement, Councilman Missions, you're wanting to send the assessment, resend the assessment notices with a proposed rate of what's been discussed tonight, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I don't think that motion changes the nature of what's been requested, it's really a procedural component. It's really up for council to decide if they want to do that as a voluntary measure, if it's not legally required. And since the motion is on the table and there's not another motion, you all could choose to vote the motion to amend up or down.
But you can't motion to amend a motion that is being considered of amending.
Well, he's...
That's not my motion, and I didn't make a motion.
That's not what you said.
So the only motion on the table at this point is the motion to amend that's been seconded on the main motion, the ma, the motion you'd proposed and adds that additional procedural component.
Mayor?
Which is...
Mr. Feraldi?
I'm voting no. Let's vote.
Do I have a point of clarification?
He just clarified.
Sorry, Ms. Timmer wasn't...
What do you want clarification on that?
The original motion, if someone can help me again, maybe restating the original motion that we're now amending. Someone please restate the original motion.
I'll restate it if it's a part of actually what we're voting on.
I'd rather hear it, she's got it now.
The motion is to amend the agenda to direct staff to present an agenda based on the car tax plan.
With respect to Alicia, that's not what we're considering right now, we're considering a motion to amend that.
That's correct, but I've asked for a point of clarification, and I wanted the original motion read. Can we let her finish, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, amend the agenda to direct staff to present an agenda, or a budget based on the car tax, and have a special meeting on June 23rd.
Based on the car tax?
Well, the car plan from earlier, I'm sorry, I was jotting down what I heard.
Words mean things, I'm trying to figure out what we're doing.
Sure, sure, this is my, what I'm trying to gather during the meeting real quick.
Thank you for that, that does help. My clarification I need is, that's very generic language, I don't even know what that means, to be honest, the car tax plan. There's nothing in there about a real estate rate, there's nothing in there about, there's only this mention of a tax cut of some type, of personal property. He's now saying it's a bigger cut, but where's the, where's the tax rate?
I said it.
Okay, that wasn't in what I heard, so I'm just trying to clarify.
So what was the tax rate?
So what's the tax rate?
Mayor, I'll answer that question if this motion passes, which I hope it doesn't.
So we don't know what we're voting on?
Vote on the motion to amend.
Your amended motion is...
Be the last time they can do anything on it.
But an amended motion is...
Amended to what? We don't know what the original is.
The amended motion is to send out flyers to everybody that's going to get...
A tax increase.
Re-adjustment.
It's not a readjustment, it's a tax increase, it's a notification about some post-tax action.
Can I seek to that before? And then, please, we seek to that. I just want to say that our city attorney's already said, first of all, he needed to research this and say if it was required, and secondly, we've already spoken to this, and we're still waiting for staff to come back with the discussion on what has been, that's what we're, the original motion was to bring back this proposal, so we don't even know what's going to happen on the 23rd. So to demand the reassessment sent out, be sent out when we don't even know exactly what's going to come back to us on the 23rd, is ridiculous, and all it is, it's pot stirring. So let's just vote on this ridiculous amendment and get back to our original motion, please. So we're not here until 1:30 again. Good gracious.
Mr. Mayor, so I got a point of clarification, point of clarification with the city manager. Mr. City Manager, the normal process, when we propose a tax rate, right? Do we do a, we do a public hearing for the proposed tax rate if it's increased, is that correct? Like if it's the more than 1%, right?
More than 1% is usually...
So we've got to do the public hearing.
I'm going to make sure that, keep me straight.
So that's right, the normal, the normal process is the public hearing, and then before the public hearing, do we send out the assessment notices before the public hearing, is that the normal process?
I'd have to make sure from Jeff Bandy, I'm making sure about as far as what all goes out before, because we've got a couple...
But doesn't, but doesn't the public notice have a requirement to list the public hearing date on it? I believe it does.
I don't remember the advertisement straight away, but I'm sure it's prescribed.
It depends on the date of the public hearing. So I don't, I don't know the particular statute by quote as to what it is, but it depends how soon after the notice is sent, as to whether the date of the public hearing is put in there or not.
So the, the date of the public hearing is required to be on, I've got it right here. So I've got the code section up here, effect on rate when assessment results in tax increase, public hearings, right? Notice of proposed real property tax increase. Notice of proposed real property tax increase. So it tells, it tells you right here. It's got the notice on here. Looking for the reassessment mailing. On the reassessment notice? Can you say that louder so we can all hear, Ms. Whit? She's over, he's, he's talking over Donna Whit, she's giving a really important piece of information. What was that, Ms. Whit?
I said, I don't know if it's required to be on there, but the notice that was sent has the public hearing time on it.
So the normal process, when we set a real estate tax rate proposal, is that we mail everybody that so they can see what their increase in paying taxes is. So just to be crystal clear, voting for my amendment means that we do what we normally do. We notify the citizens and we are transparent with them about how much more money we're taking from them. Any vote against this is a vote against transparent government.
Let's vote, let's vote.
Let's vote.
That is a misleading statement, and we've already talked to our attorney.
Has she been recognized?
I said voluntary.
Did you recognize her?
Ms. Whit.
Mayor Taylor, that's a misleading statement to go into a vote with, which is accusing us to be not transparent when we've talked to our city attorney, who has said we don't know the requirements of this. Can you speak to that, please, before we go into a vote?
So.
Good gracious.
The important component here is, is determining whether the, uh, assessment notices themselves need to be resent, even though we've already sent the current, uh, tax rate and the assessment. So Councilman Forall these presented statutes that I'd like to look into further as to whether those apply. It may be that those assessment notices do not apply. But what Councilman Missions has said is even if they don't apply, he wants them to be sent voluntarily. Then certainly he, I think he can ask for that, but certainly it'll be, uh, it'll be an administrative undertaking for sure. But as far as whether the reassessment notice is required, again, in addition to the public hearing notice in the paper, that's something I need to look at.
Want a clarification? If you look at those codes and you find that, that they don't apply, what's the impact of that?
So we would have to reassess the timeline, and that's it. If, if we were to proceed with what has been presented, we would simply look at the timeline as to how to comply.
And then when would we make that decision, and who makes it?
Um, I suppose we would make it together as council.
Special meeting or something?
Yeah, as, as, as the legal requirement, I would make that call, certainly I'll keep you all in the loop. I know staff will advise council if that is applicable and we have to revisit the dates, but I'm, I'm certain we would address that together as it arises.
It's, um.
Mr. Patrick.
That the reassessment notices that get mailed to every, uh, real estate owner in the city do not include a proposed tax rate, they include the current tax rate. The only thing that includes a proposed tax rate is the public notice required to go into the paper related to, um, the, the equalized tax rate. So even if we were to mail those, those reassessment notices to, um, all of the residents one more time, they literally wouldn't look any different than the ones that they've already received because it doesn't include a proposed tax rate. So we would just be duplicating what has already occurred.
I, I don't, I don't think that's accurate.
Mr. Forall. I'm voting no, I would like to vote.
Call to vote.
Initiating vote now.
So can you clarify what we're voting on, please?
The motion to amend to have the reassessment notices resent is what's on the table.
Now, the reassessment notes do not change anything as Mr. Patrick just said.
I don't think that that is accurate information.
So you.
I, I, I would love to see a copy of this on the screen before, when we get something thrown like that in the last, last minute, right before the vote, I mean, that is.
That's all this is.
You said you don't wanna go into a vote with bad information.
Yeah, yeah.
You're pushing for doing exactly that.
Yeah, so, so we're.
Let's get information.
Complete game-changing information, we need, we need to see it, can we get it, can we get a copy of an assessment notice on the screen?
You have a vote in progress, you can't have debate while a vote is in progress.
Mr. Mayor, you can, people don't vote, then there's no vote in progress.
Mr. Stevens, we're already, the vote was called, we're already voting.
That's correct, the vote, the vote's on the table.
So you gotta vote.
You said you didn't wanna go in with bad information.
You should have discussed this before.
There's no discussion for everybody on the dais, there's no discussion, I don't care who it is. When a vote is in progress, there's no discussion.
Either it is or it isn't, it'll change my vote if it's in there.
No, it won't.
How do you know when I'll vote? It will change my vote.
Because cash, because cash grab, Chris knows everything, Vice Mayor, that's why.
Please, let me determine my own mind, thank you. If you can read to us what it says, it'll change my vote one way or the other.
I'm happy to read the language in the assessment.
Please, no, sir.
The real, this is the language, the real estate tax rate of point seven-six-seven reflects the tax rate that, if levied, would levy the same amounts of, uh, real estate tax as tax year twenty-twenty-four, which is July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, when multiplied by the new total assessed value, uh, of real estate excluding additional assessments due to new construction or improvements to real property. The current real estate tax rate is eighty-nine cents. The Lynchburg City Council will hold a public hearing in City Council Chamber, in Council Chamber of City Hall, nine and Church Street, and then it gives the date, but it says current tax rate and not proposed. And then it's listed as eighty-nine cents in the first column. Seventy-six point seven is equalization. But I think what the intent would be was to have the notices mailed out with a dollar two point five?
That was, that was the motion to amend, that's what that was.
But, but these notices that would be mailed out, they, they wouldn't have a dollar two point five.
Not if that's what my amended motion was.
Let's vote.
The, the vote is still in progress? I'm refreshing on my end.
It's pretty amazing, this is coming from the city administration that defies the law by not having an internal audit department.
Mayor.
Marty. That's, that's, that's out of order, Marty.
It's a fact, it's not out of order.
It's not working. Can I just tell you what my vote is?
Yes, sir, you can.
My vote is to notify the citizens that their taxes are going up.
For the affirmative then. The motion fails four-three.
Please vote on the original motion, which I am emphatically support.
Nine point four million dollar tax increase on the table right now, that's what's coming.
Call to vote.
I'll be voting no against nine point four million dollar tax increase.
All right, one second. Initiating the vote on the main motion. Vice Mayor, are you still experiencing connectivity issues?
Uh, I tried to go to LynchburgCarTax.com and my computer's been crashing ever since. I can just tell you.
Sure.
I absolutely emphatically, a hundred percent, do not want to increase taxes on the four citizens of Lynchburg.
Thank you for submitting your vote. The motion has passed four-three.
Okay, moving on.
Sorry.
Agenda item number twelve, consideration of adopting an ordinance, amending Lynchburg City Code Section eleven dash one sixty point one to make technical changes and to allow, uh, the civil penalties described thereunder to apply to both residential and non-residential derelict structures. This item was discussed during council's business item briefings on May twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Motion to deny.
Mr. Martin.
I have a motion to deny on the, on the.
To deny what?
To, to deny the proposed ordinance. I don't think we should be, uh, demolishing buildings.
I wanna hear from Mr. Martin.
Vice Mayor, uh, members of council, this was presented to you on May twenty-seventh. Uh, this was, this amendment would allow the city to impose the same civil penalty on commercial and industrial structures, derelict structures that we currently, uh, do on residential. Uh, this was part of the city's twenty-twenty-five legislative agenda, and the bill was carried by delegate Wendell Walker. Um, it passed the General Assembly, it was signed by, uh, Governor Yonkin. So, uh, we are requesting that it be approved.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Second.
Second.
Good, second, okay. Go ahead and speak to your second. You wanna speak first, Chris? Mr. Wilder?
There was no second, so I took a leap of faith.
Mr. Dean, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I just, uh, can you, can you give me a little bit more information, I, I hear who's for and against it, but what does it change as far as, as the overall, uh, penalty? What, what are the penalties and what are they changing from, and what they're changing to?
Uh, which means it's, uh, been condemned, it's boarded up, and it hasn't been conduct, uh, connected to water, electric, other utilities for a period of one year, so the building's condemned. Uh, if the building is declared derelict and it's residential, the city can impose a five-hundred-dollar-per-month penalty, civil penalty on that owner. That gives the owner the ability, once it's declared derelict, the owner can do one of two things. They can demolish it on their own, or they can come in within ninety days and submit a rehabilitation plan that says, over this time period, we're going to rehabilitate the structure, or we're going to tear it down. That ability, uh, to, uh, put that civil penalty in place does not exist for commercial or industrial properties. So the only remedy we have for those condemned buildings is court, and that takes years and years and years. Uh, if this was in place, this is just really an incentive to get the owner's attention to do something with the property. Because again, as I've been before you many times, our goal is the rehabilitation of these properties.
So it's just adding businesses and?
I'm sorry?
It's just adding businesses.
Commercial and industrial.
Commercial entities, yes, okay.
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Ms. Timmer?
Uh, this goes to Mr. Deemer's question, but in the language of the resolution, it takes what's currently in the Lynchburg statute or code and expands it essentially to just include commercial. So it's not, it doesn't expand the parameters of those penalties, um, or change the nature of the penalties.
Uh, not this specifically, but it did go to your work session last night.
Any more questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, brother.
You're welcome.
Okay. May I have a motion?
We have a motion in a second, so the vote is now in progress.
Yes, we have a motion in a second, and discussion, and vote.
The motion passes six-one. Agenda item number thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a standard procedure for voting on school board appointments. This item was discussed during the council's business item briefings on May twenty-seventh.
May I have a motion?
I move that we maintain our current procedure.
A second.
Any discussion?
No, like I said the last time, well, I guess a little bit. Uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, it's worked all these years, and I think it's fine. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, it hasn't worked all these years. Um, it actually only worked the last two years, right? So that's the only time I've been doing it. And, and I just wanna point out how interesting I find it that, um, you know, we've, we've, we've got this, um, you know, if, if we're gonna do this with the school board appointments, I think that it's important that we do it, um, across the board in open session from now on, up into including, um, you know, the, setting the pay rates for our council appointees and so forth by ordinance or resolution. We should be doing all that out in the public, if we're gonna be doing it for the school board appointees in the public, we should be doing it for everybody in the public. We shouldn't be picking and choosing how it goes. I was in favor of doing a process that was, uh, just like our mayor, vice mayor, um, ballot voting. Matter of fact, that's what I understood was originally directed by us. It's funny how this stuff works, right? Because originally, there was direction provided to go prepare a process, it was like the mayor, vice mayor thing, and bring it back to us. And that's what was understood, then what comes back to us is all these different processes. So I'm gonna have to go back and watch the video too, as I actually said, just like consensus, which is supposed to be seven-oh, has now turned into four-three, we just found out upstairs. So, so, uh, you know, I don't know what's hijacked the common sense up here, I apologize for it not being here. But it hasn't worked for years, it's only worked for the last two, since we've been doing this out in the open. And I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we do ballot voting, and the reason for that is, uh, there's less opportunity for parliamentary tricks and games when it comes to school board appointments. I actually have kids in Lynchburg City Schools. The people that made the motion for this, one doesn't have kids, the other one on the campaign trail said she wouldn't send her kids to Lynchburg City Schools. So, you know, I mean, this is a big deal to me, right? The leadership for our school board. And, um, there shouldn't be politics involved in the process, parliamentary tricks and games of picking these people. It's not secret when you vote by ballot, just like we vote for mayor and vice mayor. Right? And somebody still has to get four votes to win. So I'm offering a substitute motion that we do the ballot voting.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to make one comment real quick, um, so since it wasn't seconded, just based on our, um, first, our motion and second. So, um, while I may not have had children in Lynchburg City Schools and may have had concerns about LCS at the time, I currently have a job where all LCS kids come to my second place of employment. And, um, I support our schools, and I want the best for our schools, and I think it's very important who we put on our school board, um, regardless of how we vote, uh, whether it's ballot voting or not, it's essential that we have the right people making decisions for the children, whether they're my own children or the children that I'm responsible for at the, my other place of employment. So regardless of, uh, my opinions of LCS two and a half years ago, or my concerns that I had for them then, I still have concerns for them now, and them being the best schools they can be for any child.
they can be for any child that goes there. Thank you. And I still think the way that we've been voting is the way we should continue voting.
So, we vote on the main motion?
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes six-one. Agenda number, item number 14, finalize the list of school board candidates to interview for appointments or reappointments to vacancies that will exist June 30, 2025, in school board districts one, two, and three.
I made a motion that we improved the list.
Already made.
That was outside.
I gotta speak to my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Well, speak to your motion.
I'm really excited about this school board appointment process. I think that we actually have one of the best slates of candidates that have, that we've seen since I've been on council. I think the interviews are gonna be great. I think that there's gonna be a lot of information that we're gonna get from everybody that's interviewed that's gonna be useful and helpful for our school division, whether or not they make it across the finish line. I think that we've got some really great citizens that really care about our schools, that are showing up to pitch to us why they're the right choice, and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, anyone else?
I concur.
Anyone else speak for the school board? Anyone else?
Before you vote, I think it's probably worth mentioning in the public that these have been set up for June 12, this Thursday, from 9 to 1:15, and Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:45 p.m. of this week. Remember that, Mr. Mayor? I'll initiate the vote.
We will vote.
Okay. Starting to vote now? The motion passes seven-oh.
And with that, meeting is adjourned.